All right, let's call the meeting to order. And if you could please rise for the pledge allegiance. Oh. This meeting is being recorded by the town of North Reading via Zoom and by NORCAM, and it may be being recorded by other local sources. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you don't mind, if we could just do a moment of silence, if we can remain standing for that, just to remember the victims of Uvalde, Texas, as well as Mr. Studo mentioned there, there was another shooting this evening in Tulsa, Oklahoma hospital. We just want to be in solidarity with those individuals and the people that are dealing with those tragedies. Thank you. I don't know if my colleagues have any comment about that. In these times, we do typically take a moment to discuss these things, or at least state our piece about, you know, these types of things. So if there's anyone that wants to comment, I'd invite you to do so now, or wait till the end, if you prefer.
I'd just like to comment, Madam Chair, that, again, we all sound like a broken record here, but it's time for Congress to act. You know, there is more that we agree on when it comes to gun control, common sense gun control, than what we disagree on. And there's no reason, no excuse, for Congress not to take some positive action in this direction. And it should be bipartisan. It's not a partisan issue. And it's well past the time to take appropriate action and do something, you know? And you can blame mental illness, but, you know, there's no good reason for an 18-year-old to have an AK-15 or .45, whatever the hell it was, you know, a military-grade weapon. Military-grade weapon with massive magazines, you know? That's not sports, you know? That's not... That's not appropriate. But anyway, there should be a lot of common ground here where they can make some headway in this issue, and it should be able to assist in averting these tragedies. Again, you're not going to prevent people, mentally ill people, from doing such things, but it certainly could curb the ability of some of these people to get these weapons in their hands, and it's long past due.
Can I add something? I do think that Congress needs to reduce gun control, but I also think that that's not the only answer, that there are too many kids that slip through the cracks, that too many people get need psychotherapy or whatever, and we're not meeting those needs. And, you know, we can make it hard to get a gun, but eventually some people will probably get one. And I think we need to look more closely. I think North Reading does a very kind of the issues that it can set, but so many communities don't pay attention to it nor have the resources. And I think those issues and mental health are almost as important as gun rules and regulations. My personal feeling is you shouldn't have to kill an animal or person, and you shouldn't have to have a gun, but that's just me. But I don't think it's as simple.
I don't know if anyone else has any comments.
No, I think...
You don't have? I mean, I just want to give the opportunity. We are joined by many people, so... Mrs. Gonzalez.
I can't agree more with Mrs. Tullbut. Chicago has some, I'm not going to make this a debate, but Chicago has some of the strongest gun control and the highest rate of gun violence. So mental illness is something that really needs to be dealt with in this country and dealt with better. It's not dealt with properly. That's what I would like to see happen.
Studo?
I'm going to toot my country of bird's horn. In Italy, per capita, there's just as many guns in the U.S., however, only one mass shooting in the last 30 years, and it's because of a lot of the, actually, everything that both Mr. O'Leary and Ms. Tullbut said. A combination of that is used. But, again, that's why I say that because of gun ownership, and you can, if you Google "Italy gun ownership," there was an article on it today, because of that, though, I feel that you can still, it's ironic, right? You can still have law-abiding citizens have the same number of guns, but if it's done in a certain way, you can avoid a lot of the tragedies. So I just wanted to, it was just interesting.
I think a piece of it is that Europe does not have as many incidents such as we have by the white margin, but we also never had a war fought on our land. And I think that memories of World War I and World War II and guns and fighting and killing are far more ingrained in the spirit of Europe, and that that may also prevent some of this gun violence. Just a thought.
And I'll just round off the discussion just by saying that we, you know, and I think I can speak for my colleagues, that we are in solidarity with the families of the victims here, and that we do, you know, wish them peace, pray for peace, you know, pray for them to get through what they're dealing with. And, you know, we can all throw up some answers, throw out some answers here. We all seem to have a lot of answers to the problem, but there are just evil people that do evil things, and whatever restrictions, measures, or things that can be done to prevent them, I don't understand why, and I agree with Mr. O'Leary, common sense should be put them into place. What are we doing here? We should be enlightened in 2022, and we know what those measures are. So we can't, you know, can't pretend. It's not going to prevent everything. It's not going to prevent an evil person from doing evil acts and causing trauma, but there's certain things that we should be able to do that will help prevent that. I hope that people do, you know, calmly, coolly, collectively get some of these answers in place and make some, take some proactive action on it. And I also would like to shift to something not as, you know, much, another more positive thing, and I'm taking it out of order, but if you'll indulge me, I do want to remind our, anyone that's attending and our members, that it is LGBTQ Pride Month, and it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to read the proclamation from the board in recognition of what we have done and instituted in place as a board. And so thank you for getting this ready, Mrs. McNeil, for us to remember that, this as well. Whereas we recognize June as Pride Month throughout the United States and the world, we are reminded of what makes our community great, our remarkable capacity to accept and embrace the lives of others regardless of our differences. In this regard, we stand together with the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community as they declare their pride in who they are and whom they love. The LGBTQ community has worked tirelessly for respect, equality, and their very right to exist. While there has been remarkable progress towards acceptance and equality in recent years, members of the LGBTQ community still face an unacceptable level of discrimination. We must push back against those who threaten LGBTQ people, and we must continue to make the case that all human beings share something fundamental in common. All of us want to love and be loved. Therefore, be it resolved, we are proud to support our LGBTQ community's right to live their lives out loud. As we celebrate pride, we must continue to demand equal rights for all. Therefore, be it further resolved, the select board members do hereby proclaim June to be the Pride Month for the LGBTQ community in North Reading. And therefore, be it further resolved, we encourage all residents to celebrate our proud and vigorous LGBTQ community through a parade, decorations, and moral support that reflects well on our town and support of our LGBTQ neighbors. And we recognize LGBTQ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods have made North Reading a vibrant community in which to live, work, and play, and by the select board proclaim this first day of June 2022. It's kind of a nice way to round off the message of the devastation and that we can, you know, support one another and especially support our LGBTQ residents and neighbors in this community. I don't know if anyone wants to add to that, but I appreciate your letting me address that, too, this evening. Mr. Walner?
So there is a, I was going to mention it during our, at the end of the meeting, but there is a Pride Ride on Sunday, June 12th, just like last year was the first one. It's going to gather at East River Park. That's a Sunday, and so if you want to participate, and it was a good time last, we had a classroom last year, so I encourage you to join. And again, there's the North Reading Pride Committee, and they just need to know by the fifth, if you're interested in being in the parade, you can decorate your car, do whatever you want with it, make it nice. And I heard there might be a party afterwards at the gazebo, but I don't know if that's true. So come out for Pride Ride and, you know, live up to the words we just talked. So thanks for saying those.
That's great. Pride Ride, you can join, decorate, decorate up your car.
Yep.
Or also come out on the street and just cheer along the participants in the parade and just show your support for our LGBTQ community.
And it was very positive last year. Yeah, it was great.
What was the time, Rich?
It's, the parade starts at 12:00. Yeah, and the cars line up at 11:15, right at the East River Park.
So thank you, Mr. Wallner, for mentioning that. All right, and our next order of business is going to be the 745 warrant article informational hearing. So let me just read this notice of informational hearing. The North Reading Select Board does hereby notify the residents of the town of North Reading that an in-person and virtual informational hearing on the following articles contained in the June 6, 2022 Town Meeting Warrant Article will be held Wednesday, June 1, 2022, 7:45 p.m., Town Hall, Room 14. The hearing information for access via phone, dialed by telephone, meeting ID via the Internet on Zoom, the meeting ID information is on the informational notice that was published. The hearing will represent an opportunity for residents to learn more about the articles on the Town Meeting Warrant, to ask questions, and to engage in discussion in advance of the spring annual town meeting. And the listing of town articles, 1 through 27, follow. And this hearing is held pursuant to sections 18 through 25 of Chapter 30A of the Massachusetts General Law, the open meeting law. Any interested citizen is welcome to virtually attend and participate in this hearing. This is a notice of explanation. It is the unanimous desire of the North Reading Select Board to encourage and allow the highest level of public participation in making decisions that affect North Reading. This warrant article hearing is intended to represent an opportunity for extended discussion in advance of town meeting. We sincerely hope that you will join us for this hearing on June 1 at 7:45 p.m., signed by the Select Board. And we are watching for those attending online. We are going to be watching if you have any questions as we move along the warrant articles. The town administrator is watching. If you can either raise your hand or make a chat, go into the chat room, and if you have any questions or you have any comment to participate, we've just opened the public hearing, informational hearing. So please feel free to raise your hand or chat or alert us in another way, wave your hand or alert us in another way, if you'd want to ask a question on any of these articles. Just giving Mr. Gilburgo a second to get everything set up. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Gilburgo. All right. So we also may be, we may be voting on some of these this evening to my colleagues. If they're, if we haven't already voted on these, there may be some that are, that we're going to be taking a vote. Mr. Gilburgo, you have a presentation, I think, right? Did you want me to begin, or do you just want to take it away?
I can go through articles.
Why do we do that? I know that a lot of these are routine, but just in case people have a question on them, we want to make sure we go through them again.
Okay. Madam Chair, thank you. This first slide shows you the available funding sources for the upcoming town meeting, some of which will be used to fund the various articles. However, the primary funding source will be the town's raised and appropriated sources.
I think you're going to need to talk more directly into that. We can hear you, but I don't know.
Okay. Is this better?
Phil says yes.
Phil says yes, okay. So I think this might go along.
Yes.
Excuse me. The slide up here shows you the available funding sources for many of the articles to be taken up at the town meeting. It does not list the largest funding source, which is the town's raised and appropriated budget, which is funding utilizing state aid and local receipts as well as property tax revenues. That's identified in the budget article. So going right through, Article 1 is a budget amended for fiscal year 2022. We, at this point, are only aware of one transfer that we propose, which is a transfer of $50,000 from the Solid Waste Stabilization Fund to line 35 solid waste and expenses of FY '22 budget for the purchase of the pay-as-you-thrown trash bags required for the pay-as-you-thrown program slated to begin later in the calendar year. That's a $50,000 transfer from the stabilization fund to the budget. Both the Finance Committee and Select Board have recommended the article. As you saw on the prior slide, the balance is $165,000. There's no questions on it.
I don't see any, any other comment or question from anyone that's here? All set?
Madam Chair, Article 2, funding the fiscal year 2022 snow and ice deficit. This appropriation pays expenses that exceed the amount budget in the fiscal year 2022 budget. We anticipate funding $480,000 with free cash to reflect the overage associated with multiple snow and multiple ice events over the course of the winter. Again, the funding source being free cash. Select Board and Finance Committee have both recommended the article. Madam Chair, I would just note that state law does allow us to carry this deficit into the next fiscal year. However, we are choosing instead to fund it using free cash rather than using so.
Okay. Any questions? All right, moving right along. Oh, hold on one second. I see a chat raised.
Having a hard time understanding.
Having a hard time understanding.
It's probably, you probably need to pull that mic closer to you.
Is that...
Understanding or hearing? That is difference. Hearing.
Yes, okay.
Okay, hopefully this is better. Sir, is this sound better?
Yes.
Thank you.
You had some, Mrs. DeSharrow wanted to join, too.
Yeah, I just...
She also... All right, we're moving on to Article 3.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a transfer of funds to the Capital Improvement and Stabilization Fund to be used for capital purchases and debt service. Current balance, $958,995. This article proposes to add $1,950,000 from free cash to the fund. As you know, our financing plan for the fiscal year '23 budget called for a transfer of $1,450,000 into the fund. We are recommending that the balance of unexpended free cash after we go through these articles also be added to this fund for potential use for either debt service or capital needs in the coming months and years as we go through our capital plan.
Okay, you have five, it looks like five chats, some of which may be resolved, but can we just make sure that we don't have any questions on this one? We're all set? Okay, good. Does anyone have any questions? All right, we are all set, moving along.
Article 4, transferring funds to the Water Stabilization Fund. This is a transfer of water enterprise retained earnings to be transferred into the stabilization fund in the amount of $287,325, which represents the balance certified by the department revenue as of June, or July 1, 2021.
Any questions? Does anybody have any questions? We're all set.
Madam Chair, Article 5, transferring funds to the Stabilization Fund. Current balance is $3,784,025, with a recommendation of transferring $250,000 in free cash to the stabilization fund. Again, this is a general stabilization fund to municipal funds aside as they are available.
Mr. Gilburgo, you may have to talk a little bit louder.
Okay.
And does anybody have any questions? Mr. O'Leary, can you present Articles 1 through 5 at the town meeting?
I believe I'm capable. Yes.
All right. Do you have questions, Mr. Studo?
There might be one at the end that I may volunteer, Mr. O'Leary, as well.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that would be one we want him on.
That's all right. I just, I was just going to go in order, but if you want to take some at the end, that's all right. We'll cross that bridge when we get on to it. All right. Article 6, moving along.
Article 6, transferring funds to the Other Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. That balance is $2,897,213. We are recommending funding that in a later article as part of the FY '23 funding plan, and therefore are recommending that the board actually vote now to recommend passing over that article. That is one of the few for which a recommendation had not been offered.
So do we have any questions? Do we have a motion?
We do. Madam Chair, I move to recommend passing over Article 6, fiscal year 2022, transfer funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust fund.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous it will be passed over. We'll recommend pass over by the Select Board.
Madam Chair, through you, transferring funds to the Solid Waste Stabilization Fund, Article 7. Current balance is $165,970. They are recommending transferring $30,000 from free cash. This is a transfer that we did not do during the course of fiscal year 2021, as we normally would do. We've waited for free cash to be certified, which has occurred, as you know, and we are recommending a transfer of $30,000 from free cash into that fund, which both the Select Board and Finance Committee have previously recommended.
Any questions? Any comment? Seeing none, so we can move on.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 8, appropriating funds to the Participating Funding Arrangement Fund. Very similar situation to the Solid Waste Stabilization Fund. We did not make this transfer after the close-up of fiscal year 2021. The funds closed to free cash, and we are recommending transferring them from free cash to the Participating Funding Arrangement Fund. And again, this amount reflects a surplus generated from active employee health insurance in fiscal year 2021. It's the town share. There is a separate share in payroll deduction accounts that represents the employee share, and both the Select Board and Finance Committee have previously recommended.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none. Hearing none. Can move on.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 9, a routine article that authorizes the Select Board to choose officers for which no other selection process is provided, and the Select Board has recommended the Finance Committee has determined that no action is required.
Okay. Any questions? All set.
Article 10, to hear and act on reports of town officers and committees. This is to, excuse me, allow for reports of town officers and committees, as well as to accept the annual report in written form. Both the Select Board, the Select Board has recommended, the Finance Committee has determined that no action is required, and I am aware of at least one or two reports to be offered, one of which will be from the facilities master plan, and I believe there may be a report from the Economic Development Committee as well, though that's to be determined.
All right, any questions? All right. I don't see any. I don't see any in the chat. Mr. Walner, can you handle Articles 6 through 10, please?
Sure.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 11, prior year bills. We had thought that there was a conservation commission bill that needed to be paid. We later identified that it was a responsibility of an applicant, and so that will be handled by the applicant as is required through their process. However, there were some bills that were identified between now, between the last meeting on May 9 and now. These are injured-on-due claim deductibles that were not previously invoiced by our insurance carrier in the amount of $2,314.47. These require a forfeits vote at town meeting, and we are recommending a funding source be pensions and benefits line 33 of the current year fiscal year 2022 budget. The board had not offered a recommendation yet with regard to this article, and it is the Finance Director who denies recommendations that the board vote to recommend, and I believe the motion is that.
All right, any questions? Any questions of our attendees? Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 11, prior year bills.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Select Board recommends.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 12, the fiscal year 2023 operating budget. It is voted as two motions, one from available funds, mainly raise and appropriate, as well as debt service allocation. The grand total is $84,214,255. I've provided, the Finance Director has provided a breakdown here showing four major categories of appropriation. For those who have been following along, we did have a pretty detailed hearing on May 9 on the budget itself, so you are seeing a summary in the event a further review is required at town meeting, and we'll have the capability to go through some more detail on the budget. But to summarize, general government, which includes employee benefits, $32,991,480. Education, which includes not only North Reading public schools, but our assessments to the vocational and technical schools, $36,481,702. Our enterprises, of which there are three, Parks and Recreation, Millview, and Water, total $7,021,247. And our debt service payments, which total $7,719,826. The Select Board has voted to previously recommend, as has the Finance Committee.
Okay, any questions on the budget? Pretty well detailed in the warrant with those pages and pages. Does anyone have any comment? I've seen none. I don't see any.
This is just a pie chart, a part pie chart showing the breakdown between schools and municipal government operations, which is 66.89%, compared to 33.11%. Additional, the breakdown showing fixed costs for municipal government operations. Article 13, funding retirement obligations. They are recommending funding $150,000 from free cash, $75,000 of which would be for municipal retirement obligations, and $85,000 of which would be for public school retirement obligations. And both the Select Board and the Finance Committee have previously voted to recommend the articles.
Any questions or comment? Seeing none, we can move on.
Article 14, transferring funds to the Other Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. As I mentioned earlier, this is an annual appropriation from raise and appropriate within our budget in the amount of $300,000, and it is being recommended in accordance with our annual financing plan. The Select Board and the Finance Committee have both previously voted to recommend.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none.
Article 15, authorizing the treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements. This has become a routine article which allows the town treasurer to enter into agreements with banks. with banks, to which a portion of the interest earnings of deposits are retained by the bank in exchange for their services rather than making a direct payment to the bank for its services. Both the select board and the finance committee have voted to previously recommend.
Okay, any questions? Or comment, or chat? All right, seeing none. Mrs. Gonzalez, will you take Articles eleven through fifteen, please? Article sixteen?
Madam Chair, through you, Article sixteen would be to rescind authorizations to borrow previously authorized borrowing. There are none anticipated at this time, and we had indicated to the boards and the finance committee that we would continue our review. And based upon our overall plans for this town meeting, it is our recommendation that the board vote to recommend passing over this article. And we have prepared an article, a motion accordingly in the package for this evening meeting.
Okay, any questions? Any comment? Seeing none. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend passing over Article sixteen, rescind authorization to borrow.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Is recommend, select board recommends passing over.
Article seventeen is the annual capital budget, presented by the capital improvement planning committee on May ninth and approved by the board at that time. I will just briefly go through, or present, I should say, a detailed listing of the appropriations, both through funding to be authorized as free cash or authorization to borrow. There are a couple of pages of them. I am not gonna read through all of them, but they are printed in the warrant that was mailed to every residence home and arrived a week or ten days or so. The select board and the finance committee both have previously voted to recommend the article.
Okay, any questions? Any comments? Seeing none. So that, all set.
I'll note, Madam Chair, that the article does include enterprise-funded projects as well. Article eighteen, funding town building repairs. DPDW is looking to make various miscellaneous repairs and improvements to municipal buildings for a total of fifty thousand dollars, or recommending it be funded from free cash. Select board and the finance committee have both previously voted to recommend.
Any questions or comments? None. All right.
Madam Chair, through you, Article nineteen would authorize the expenditure of so-called Chapter Ninety state highway construction funding. We anticipate receiving five hundred fourteen thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars from the state, which is the town share of two hundred million dollars being distributed by the state statewide in fiscal year 2023. Both the select board and the finance committee have previously voted to recommend.
Questions? Comments? We're all set.
Article twenty, a routine article that authorizes the director of public works to accept easements for construction and maintenance of water mains, drainage, and other purposes. Both the select board and finance committee have previously voted to recommend.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments or chat? None. All right. Mr. Studo, can you present Articles sixteen through twenty, please?
I'd love to.
All set?
Article twenty-one, appropriating funds for legal expenses regarding the middle high school litigation. No appropriations anticipated to be requested at this time, and we would recommend to the board that it vote to recommend passing over the article. And a motion has been prepared.
Questions? Comments? All right, seeing none. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend passing over Article twenty-one, appropriate funds, appropriate funds for legal expenses, middle high school litigation.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
To unanimous, select board will pass over.
Madam Chair, through you, Article twenty-two, appropriation for funds for the legal expenses associated with the twenty Elm Street litigation. We are recommending that the board recommend the town meeting pass over the article as no further appropriation is required at this time.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, through you, we have just, we have about a hundred twenty thousand dollars remaining in that provision. It's a substantial amount of money at this point in time, and there is a motion, yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to recommend passing over Article twenty-two, appropriate funds for legal expenses to twenty Elm Street litigation.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
To unanimous, we'll, select board will recommend passing over. Mr. Gilberto, I, I was planning to do the next remaining ones unless I get told otherwise by my colleagues, but I think it's important to at least give an update, one, two, three lines about where these are at, including what stage they're at, to the, to the town meeting. I think we're, we know that there's a trial scheduled in August for the, for the middle and high school litigation, a long-awaited after COVID, finally scheduled trial, so hopefully well, we will see the light at the end of the tunnel on that one soon. And then twenty Elm Street, that has not had its adjudicatory hearing yet.
There was a examination of witnesses that occurred, however, a decision's not been issued at this point.
Oh, I see, okay. Did go through the adjudication, but we're awaiting the decision. All right. So I think it's important to at least give an update so that, you know, these are our, is on here for a long time, a number of town meetings, so it'd be nice to update people.
We'll make those additions, thank you.
All right. So Article twenty-three?
Article twenty-three would increase the amount for disabled veterans property tax exemption. It's currently four hundred dollars imported. We are recommending, and the board has submitted to town meeting, that the amount be increased to eight hundred dollars. Both the select board and the finance committee have recommended this article.
Okay, any questions, comments? Seeing none. Good. Move on to the next one.
Article twenty-four, increasing the income limit for senior property tax deferral. I would note that there was a question relative to what the dollar amount will actually be. It is currently twenty thousand dollars. This article would state that that twenty thousand dollar number would become sixty-two thousand dollars, period. So we previously had gone through and shown different tiers. It's a flat number at sixty-two thousand dollars for, for individuals who are making a claim. And I'm sure Mr. O'Leary has probably told us this, going, we're going through the conversation. The board has previously voted to recommend it, as the finance committee, as you know, this was an attempt for us to try to offer property tax relief in the form of deferral. So it does not forgive the taxes they are due to the town upon the sale of the property. But an individual who chooses to do so may now defer those taxes to a later point in time, and may do so with earnings of up to sixty-two thousand dollars. And that number is indexed to the amount established by the commissioner of revenue at the state level annually. Again, for the current fiscal year, it's sixty-two thousand dollars.
And I think for the purpose of the presentation, if we did, we do, if this does get approved at town meeting, it remains in effect and then it ties to that, I believe?
It does, yes.
That we learned, right? So if it increases, that amount would increase, and we don't have to revote this.
That is our understanding from town council, yes.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any, anyone else have any questions or comments or?
Glad we're doing it.
Yes, of course.
Good thing.
He's, he's the other previous one, too. So any comment, chat, question from anyone in attendance? We're all set. And also, we have ours, we're joined by our assessor, so thank you for being here this evening, too. All right, so we can move, move along to the next one.
Article twenty-five, relative to the alarm systems. Currently, the town's general bylaws require a three hundred dollar annual payment for properties that tie into the municipal fire alarm system. This would move the authority to establish that fee from bylaw to the fire chief. And the reason is because the chief intends to make available a program where the fee is waived for an amount of time determined to be at least three years, to encourage property owners to connect what is now a wireless system as a result of a capital investment that we've made over the past couple of years. He's not able to do so under the current bylaw, but that is the intention with regard to making this change. Both the select board and the finance committee have recommended, we're trying to incentivize property owners for whom this would be an expense if they are making a conversion by offering them the ability to waive the fee for a couple of years.
All right. Any questions or comments? See none. I see none. And that's, we already voted to recommend.
Indeed, both, both the select board and the finance committee previously voted to recommend.
Are you taking those five, Kate? Is that what you said?
Yes. I was gonna take the rest.
So you're taking the rest, huh?
But I, if, if, it doesn't matter to me if you and Vincenzo want to do the...
Maybe even if you read it, we'll be up for explanation. If there's questions.
Right. Articles twenty-six and twenty-seven is, I was just gonna take the remaining ones, knowing you're, I know you're probably gonna take leave, right, at the meeting to do a presentation on this one? No?
Yes.
Or yes?
Yes.
Probably, but a short one.
Okay.
We get five minutes.
You may not even need leave. All right.
Article twenty-six would amend the town's overall general bylaws relative to assessments, specifically sewer veterans. And this is a more extensive presentation, three or four slides that we've developed compared to the last review that we did. We've also condensed a lot of the history in the background as well to really get to the salient points of what this proposal is. And I think it's no secret, we've said this before, the planning effort underway for potential wastewater project to be, to be brought forward in the fall at a special town meeting has resulted in us identifying some, some areas where we wish to update the bylaw in advance of not only an upcoming project, but any future sewer-related project. Currently, to assess veterans for sewer project, the town's bylaws require that the town provide, based on the availability of funds, fifty percent of the funds required. A majority vote of abutting property owners based on estimated usage sewer flow, and that assessment to be bettered properties, to better properties be the lower of estimates versus actual cost, which would place the burden of any shortfall directly on the town, specifically its taxpayers. The proposed bylaw, developed by the director of public works who is seated here to my left, working with town council, would make the following changes. Eliminate the requirement that fifty percent of the necessary funds be paid by the town, and replace it with language that grants town meeting the authority to determine a percentage or when the absence of such determination, that the select board to determine a percentage to be borne by the town. It would eliminate the requirement that a majority of the abutting property owners vote in favor of a project, which could prevent assessment of the cost of a sewer project upon the benefited landowners. It would allow the select board to separate costs to be immediately assessed to sewer abutting property owners as sewer veteran assessments, from those costs which would be reserved for sewer privileged fee assessments to non-abutting properties that connect to the sewer line in the future. So people who are not the subject of an abetment right now, because they don't abut the line, but seek to suck to tie in in the future, reserves that portion of fee to be assessed to those properties at that time. The select board, they also separate the cost of general benefit facilities, such as pump stations, trunk and force mains, which we've talked a lot about, from that of the special benefit facility, such as a sewer main that goes right to an abutting property. Why make these changes? Removing the requirement of the approval of a majority of abutting property owners will allow the town, through its voters at town meeting, to make decisions regarding allocation of costs for construction of wastewater or sewer in North Reading. The town's currently required fifty percent share is ultimately the responsibility of the taxpayer, and the appropriate share might vary depending on the nature of the sewer project. Removing this requirement will allow the town to determine through its town meeting or the select board, the appropriate percentage to be borne by the taxpayer for the particular project. A very important note, and it's not something that we really brought to light, but I think needs, cannot be understated. Town meeting approval of funding is required for any project to proceed, with or without betterments. So even if a project were articulated to be a one-hundred, one-hundred percent betterment project, the funding still needs to be authorized at town meeting. Separating a proportion of these costs for future connections outside the initial betterment area, or for future development within the betterment area, will ensure that there are no free rides in the form of properties that were not bettered, but were developed after the betterment assessment is made, and accessing new or additional sewer capacity. So we tried to consolidate the presentation, because I know there were some questions that came up, and took to heart what the concerns were here. We are not recommending any changes to the bylaw as printed in the warrant and mailed to the residents at this point in time. I know, and I won't speak for the two board members who are involved, but Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Studo have been part of multiple conversations in regard to the feedback that we've heard, and try to take the appropriate steps to further outline what this bylaw would do.
That was quite clear. You do have this, you are, in this article, there is one change, so that in here that we're proposing for, there is one application, yeah.
There, there are multiple changes in the bylaw. I'm only saying that we're not recommending changing that language that's in the law.
Oh, I see, okay. Any further than once?
Correct. That's correct. There are multiple changes.
All right. Questions, comments, Mr. Studo?
And what I'd like, I'll, I'll abridge it even more. When I get asked how I'm describing it, very simply, maximum flexibility for the town. The town, and the town or the voters to, for each project, because this is not just for this sewer project, because we don't know where this is going. It could get shut down, but there could be a future wastewater project. It's to give the town a custom approach, an appropriateness per project, not a one-size-fits-all with what we have now. And one-size-fits-all is typically, I'm learning, do not work for any project of, from small to too large. So again, it's just for, to, in my opinion, update of very, I don't know, I mean, really a bylaw that I don't think is practical in today's, you know, structure, and there's just so many moving parts, that it has such a rigid bylaw when it comes to certain things, just didn't make sense. So again, it's just a vote for maximum flexibility, and then, I mean, this is kind of just something to have even for future projects, but again, I mean, the town authorizing itself to then authorize something else in the form of who gets the betterment, that's, that's all that's really doing here. There's nothing more, it's not, you know, we, those discussions are gonna come in other forums. When there's more information that's gonna be readily available in the next coming weeks, then those discussions will come on the percentages and one way or the other. But that's not today. Today is just simply updating a bylaw that is antiquated and really doesn't allow us any flexibility in even future projects when it comes to wastewater, pretty much anywhere in any form in North Reading, you know, it's kind of pretty rigid. So I just wanted to add that, because I think that, I've been asked as well, like, hey, Vincenzo, what, you know, what's going on? Does this mean that it's gonna go a hundred percent one way or the other? And it's like, no, actually, it doesn't mean any of that. It just means that the town's gonna decide how it goes. So again, just to reiterate that, that line you put there, that, you know, because I read some of the commentary as well in various platforms, that town meeting approval for the funds, that's like really important. So, because I think that, you know, there was some chatter that, you know, today, or a town meeting on June sixth, a vote yes for this was that, thank you, thank you, everybody go home, we have the money, start building, and that wasn't the case. So I just wanted to make it clear. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? Comments?
Just one question.
Mr. Walner?
We don't have experience, obviously, with this. Is this language that we would see in other towns, that other towns have done that have sewage already in place? Would that be a fair, would that be a fair statement?
Madam Chair, through you, yes. You know, some bylaws are older than others, some are more detailed than others. They are, the authority is all rooted in state statute, and this bylaw was intended to provide clear, a line, a clear syncing with what state statute allows, and not burden the town for any decision that it wants to make with regard to wastewater in future.
I would put that in there to reassure people that we're not creating something brand-new, that this is actually pretty standard for towns that have this potential.
I'll just ask the DPDW director.
Best practice, you know, best practice type thing.
Anything you want to add to that?
Just that a lot of the language that's in the bylaw is actually sort of quoted from that general law, as you read the gentleman's.
I would just add that in to reassure people that we're not making up something, you know, on our own. know, on our own. Right?
Okay, Mrs. Herbert.
Yes, Mr. Keller could not be here today because he's working on his tan, so. I know he always comes back in between, so I'm looking whether he left. Anyways, he sent out an email voicing a concern that, trying to find the logic behind the 50% town share for street sidewalks and storm drains and water supply, while going up to a possible 100% for the sewer betterment thing. I think his point, if I'm reading his email correctly, is that he thinks that equity would seem to dictate a uniform approach, and that residents on unacceptable roads should not get a better deal than those having a sewer passing by their homes. So I, his question, I think his question is, why are we breaking up sewers for this? Why not all betterments?
Madam Chair, through you, so we did, that was a question that we received from Mr. Keller in a timely fashion, and I would say this, you know, one of the challenges that we, that I've identified with this bylaw going back eight years, is I've not seen a single instance where we've been able to effectively implement it. We've not gone to town meeting to seek the appropriation of funding, we're not issuing bills to the abutting property owners on private or public ways, and the most recent example I can cite to folks on that is Swan Pond Road. We had quite a bit of conversation, and it was very clear in the conversation that it was not going to be a candidate for a betterment, because we were not constructing it to become an accepted way. So I think that the approach we wanted to take is, there are, the sewer is a much more complicated and potentially impactful project, for which there is no one-size-fits-all solution. And because of the unknown of what the development potential might be, and the desire to make sure every property owner is paying their fair share, breaking this up separately made the most sense. The other areas that are identified in the bylaw right now, including the unacceptable ways, are generally for drains, sidewalks, which we're going to a ton of new construction of, or paving of a way as well. Well, there is an impact on the properties from an aesthetic standpoint and an access standpoint, it's not necessarily as significant as adding wastewater to a property.
I also, I would also add though, too, that we can't seek or use funding for the private ways, like we might be able to put towards the public ways, that this is, you know, just taking the current sewer project. So it's not, I think it's saying that, that they're, they're getting an unfair deal as compared to people that might only have to pay 50%, they might only have to pay, you know, 80% of something that's largely funded by whatever, you know, whatever funds we can put towards this.
I think Mr. Keller's point is not just unacceptable roads, and that just happened to be an example that we set out, perhaps it's not a good example, what do I know?
I don't think it is, because we can't use, we did learn with Swan Pond, we're not allowed to put any of those state funds towards that. That would come directly out of the town's.
But I believe that his point is, betterment assessment covers a lot of things besides unacceptable roads and sewers, as written here, and the betterment is 50% or less for everything but sewers, and up to 100% sewers, and I think his sense is, why not a little bit more equity? I don't do the messenger, but I know that this was something he was concerned about, and that he wanted brought up tonight, and was unable to be here.
Okay. Oh, is someone else, question, another question?
From Zoom.
Oh, from Zoom, okay. I can't read it.
Larry.
I believe it's Larry?
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, thank you for this presentation. Well, I just wanna, I have a few questions and concerns. But there was a procedure that was in place for paying for this when voters approved the fund for this phase of the project. And that plan was the current bylaw, which is required to downpay 50% of the burden.
Larry, do you mean, Larry, do you mean for Swan Pond Road?
No, I'm talking about the, the current project with the.
The sewer, sewer, oh.
Okay, so the current bylaw, you know, requires 50% of the, of the, of the betterment, be paid as a legitimate. So now, and the reason for doing that, the reason that that's in the bylaw now, is because, you know, sewers will benefit, it'll increase the tax base by, you know, lots of businesses, and that benefits the whole town. But now, as I understand it, you know, you're sort of like, even voters have approved this phase of the current study, but now you're changing the rules in the, in the middle of the game. And so now what you wanna do is, is make it so that it's like a majority rule, so you'll, you'll put it up at town meeting, so the rest of the town will probably say, we're gonna pay 0%. You know, you wanna make it so that it, it, it sounds nice that you wanna make it like a democracy, but sometimes that's not fair, when the whole town is getting a benefit from this. But you're making it so that the other parts of the town have the say in how much they're gonna pay. So I'm just wondering if you would consider taking this part of the bylaw out, or putting some limit on it, so that the town will pay some share, that you're not gonna, you know, put it to a, a majority rule vote, because if you have just majority rule like that, you know, bad things can happen, I think we all know that. So that's why I think that the current bylaw is like it is, and taking it out like that completely may not be fair. I have a few other questions, too, if somebody wants to, should I just continue with a few other my, my questions?
Do we want Larry's last name and address, too, just for the record?
Yeah. Larry, can we just, why don't we take them one at a time, okay? And you're from, you're from North Reading, right, Larry?
That is correct.
For the minutes, you need, you need a last name and address.
Do you mind giving us your name and address, just for the record, for our record?
Yeah, my name is Lawrence Tucci, for Austin Road.
Thank you. Let's, let's take them one at a time. Our town administrator had his hand up to answer at least that first question that you presented, to maybe give you more clarification.
Sure, Madam Chair.
Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you through you. You know, at the time that we sought the request for funding for this stage of planning and design work, I think we were pretty upfront with folks, that we did not know how this was all going to play out, and we're still working through that, and that was part of why we sought funding for the financial plan. And during the course of the, very beginning of the work on the financial plan, in the fall after the town meeting, it became clear that this restriction, this limitation of 50%, on which we were not relying for budgeting purposes at the time we brought forward the request in October of last year, but that it could limit the town, that it could really limit what the options are, and that it could potentially create an imbalance, where the town's share being at 50% might not be possible financially for the taxpayer, or might be unbalanced compared to the impact of the increase in value of property for those better. So the DPW Director identified, pretty early on, if it'd be late 2021 or early this calendar year, that this ought to be something that we should consider. Again, not making any determination about what that allocation could be, this bylaw change could happen, we could present the financing, the financing plan in November or October of this year, and town meeting could say that 50% is the right balance, that's entirely possible. But right now, under the bylaw, we would be limited to that, and we're trying to provide the board, the Finance Committee, and the town through its town meeting, maximum flexibility as to what that scenario might be. So the short answer to the question is, we identified it as we went through the initial work on the financial plan, and that's why we recommend it. Madam Chair, just as an important, just as a.
Situation where the town meeting said, well, let's just put 0%, so the town doesn't have to pay a nickel for that, and that shifts a much bigger burden on, on the, on, on, on the areas being sewed. So it just seems like if you're putting it to the majority rule, you know, the taxpayer over there on the other side of town, he's probably gonna say, well, Jesus, it might benefit to say 0%. You know, let's take a vote in the town meeting, make it 0%. Why would they say, why would we want it? You know, it's not with their interest, and to pay 0 on it. And that's not, the goal of this whole sewer project is to benefit the town as a whole. Like, you know, when you, when you have any, any, in town, whether it's schools or anything, parks, some people benefit and some people don't, and this, this to me really smacks of, you know, just allowing the rest of the town to get off spot free, when they're getting benefit from the, from the sewer. But what I'm suggesting is, that you put some kind of, amend this, or that you put some kind of limit, that the, you know, the town can, can adjust their share from, you know, maybe, I don't know, some number like 30%, to 70%. But don't, don't let it go down to 0. That, that just wouldn't be fair, you know, and especially since the town has already approved this study. Now you're changing the game, changing the rules. I, I think if you had said that this was gonna be paid solely by the, by the abutters, if this had gone forward to this level, it would have been thrown out previously. But you're changing the rules in the middle of the game, and you're changing, you're changing it quite drastically.
Okay. Larry, Mr. We're gonna just try to talk to that point, to Mr. O'Leary, did you wanna?
Yes, so Larry, one thing you have to understand is, you know, well, it, it sounds like it's a majority rule, it's not. Most sewer projects are going to be, not just raising appropriate, but through borrowing. Borrowing requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting, so not just a simple majority, it's a two-thirds vote. And as far as the 50% share, if it's cast in stone, it sometimes makes potential projects not economically feasible. And what this does, is proposing to do, is to allow the flexibility of the Select Board into a town meeting, the opportunity to fairly assess the people who are truly being bettered, and are gonna gain the most majority of benefits of this. And you're absolutely right, you know, the project that we're gonna be proposing in the fall, and again, and I, I hope you can sort of separate this, and I know the timing of this is, is important, but, you know, this just highlights, because we're so close to proposing a viable project here, we had to take a good hard look at to, as to what restrictions were on us, and what the requirements, financial requirements would have been, and, you know, it doesn't make economic sense. It may very well end up being a 50-50 split, but as you pointed out, we already put 2.8 plus million dollars towards this, of everybody's money. We didn't ask for the proposed project that's being designed right now, that we're putting almost $3 million into, we're not looking for anybody other than the town, which is the taxpayers, with their, through their savings accounts here, to pay for this. We're not looking for anybody who's looking to be bettered at this point to kick in. Once we get all the information we have, we'll be able to properly assess financially, how should it be split, and how can we treat people fairly, you know, and make it, get it to a point where we can convince two-thirds of the people at town meeting to go along with it. So it's not a simple majority, it's not, you know, one, you know, 50% plus one that forces this on anybody. This is gonna be a two-thirds vote that is gonna, gonna handle it.
Appreciate that.
And what we're looking to do, is we're also looking, we're also looking towards future, if this gets approved, the specific project that we're talking about, you know, how can we handle those areas in the community that we're gonna be able to expand into? How should those people and customers be treated? And again, we can't do it with the current bylaw, so we need the opportunity to have the flexibility to make it fair for those that are buying in right at the beginning, and those that are gonna be buying in over time. The ones who are buying in over time should not get off scot-free, and they have an obligation to pay in for the, pay back a portion of those people that have already made the initial investment. So just Great Alana Sewer District, just get a little bit aside here, you know, when we buy into Great Alana Sewer District up, up there in Lawrence and North Andover, we have to pay for capital improvements that were already made 20 years ago. We have to buy in. Same, it's gonna be the same deal with the MWRA, there was a buy-in cost, but we have to pay back the MWRA memberships, you know, membership, for what investments they already made. This just allows us the same flexibility, and it, from a financial standpoint, it makes so much more sense to have a hard and fast rule, particularly with the sewers project. This is not just a, a private way where we're looking to lay some new water lines or lay down some hot top, and it should be shared, you know, by 15 people or 15 residences. We're talking about a benefit to the entire community, but that benefit is prorated, and it should be prorated appropriately. And the bylaw right now is too stringent, and probably hamstring us in relation to our financial, the financial feasibility of moving forward. So that's why we're looking for it, and town meeting will assist and will decide, along with the board, with the guidance of the Select Board, as to what the split should be, 50-50, 60-40, 70-30. And there isn't gonna be any freebie for anybody.
I, I thank you for that, and I agree that there's elements of the bylaw that need to be revised. However, I, I don't think you, you know, like, when it just goes to town meeting like that, and it's majority rule, that the town meeting might say, we're gonna pay 0% of this, and then it shifts the burden on the, on the, on the people being served. And, and that just doesn't seem fair, and, and, because you just, you don't have a good plan in place, I don't think, on how that's gonna be. You're making it sound like, like it might come up, you know, 50-40, or 20, or it could be 0, it's just, it's just majority rule, and it's opening up.
I can tell, I can, yeah, Larry, I can tell you from hundreds of hours that.
Wait a minute, we can't, we can't hear both of you talking at the same time. And I also wanted, Larry, I just also wanna give the town administrator an opportunity also to speak to that point, and I know you do also have other questions, so if we could just give the, actually, our, our director is here, and to let him also give you some food for thought on that point that you're raising, and then we'll get to your next questions, too. So, welcome, Ms. Percy.
Thank you. Larry, this is Joe Preci, Director of Public Works. So I wanna go back to the point you made, where you said that the, the project would be, you know, could be possibly 100% paid for by the abutting properties. And I just wanna clarify that, because, you know, you're gonna look at all of the sections of the, of the bylaw changes. Although the Select Board or the town meeting can choose to assess 100% of the project cost, it isn't to just the abutters of the sewer. You know, these bylaws say that we are going to look at portioning the costs to, you know, build the, what I phrase as our sewer treatment plant, the pump stations, and force mains, everything we need to get to the wastewater plant in North Andover. We, we separate all those costs, we know that not everybody that's connecting to, you know, the system now, that are abutting the system, is gonna use up all that other, all the capacity that that, that construction has. So we're reserving, in essence, some of that cost, and not putting that towards betterment. So that would, you know, reduce, certainly reduce, you know, betterment assessments to less than 100% of the, the total project cost. You know, what that actually amounts to be, really depends on, in, in a lot of these uniform methods, as, you know, reflected in these bylaws, how much flow is, is actually coming from those that are abutting the property, to, you know, how much flow the system has, or the capacity that we're constructing, you know. So there's a percentage out there, we're gonna go through the uniform method to come up with some, you know, appropriate way to portion costs, and determine what's to be paid for now by those that are abutting the sewer, and what will be reserved to charge as sewer privilege fees, as people can. the sewer and what will be reserved to charge as sewer privilege fees as people connect to those, to the line in the future. It potentially increase the property use if they see a means to do so through the sewer and the economic ability to do so as well. They can pay and purchase more capacity at a later time. So the general fund is paying, or the town is paying a portion, reserving, you know, that cost in this type of method. I'll start there and see if you have any additional questions.
Well, I think Larry's point is very similar to Don's, Don Kelleher's point. So while your representation is understood and heard, our, from our review of it, the select board is recommending this modification, but under, we understand, I mean, it's certainly clear what your issue is. It's very similar to the issue that Don has raised as well in the letter that he provided to Abby to read to us. So the concern being, well, what's to, what's to prevent or stop the, a decision that, you know, okay, you're going to pay 100% of it, is that's really what his issue is. There's nothing that, you know, fixes it like it was before at 50%. So I think that what the select boards, I think Mr. Studo mentioned this, is the select board's purpose in trying to usher in this modification is just one step on the ladder to be, to have in the leeway that the select board needs to be looking at all of these alternative methods that Mr. Ferrisi just mentioned, whereas before we, we didn't have this, we weren't able to do this. And there's somehow we need to work in this change to the bylaw to give us that broad ability to change it versus just a 50-50, the town pays 50, the abutter pays 50. So it's giving us the option to be able to look at it from a different perspective to be able to, you know, have a, have a more equitable way to pay for it. So, but I think the language is his, Larry's issue, the language is, is his issue in terms of their, now not being that tied into 50% has to be, you know, up to 50%, so to speak. Larry, you had other questions you wanted to ask, right?
Yes, I did. So the current plan is to go down, for example, Main Street, Route 28. What about the side street? So right now, like I said, I live on Austin Road, about 200 feet from Route 28. Would you in the future decide, "Oh, I'm going to, we can, we can get more revenue by sending a sewer line up Austin Road, and now all of a sudden I have to pay a betterment on that?" If you could change the rules in the middle of the game like this, would you do that, like to decide that we're going to now go up the side street and require all houses on the side street to pay the betterment fees?
So why don't we let the director answer that? What is the current, or Mr. Gilberto's raising his name? Go ahead, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't want to get too sidetracked on a specific project, but to answer the question, this discussion began in 2014 with not only Main Street, Park Street West, and Conner Street, but also Alamo Gardens Pond and numerous side streets up and down Main Street. And it was a calculated decision to focus whatever project was first brought forward to be Main Street, Park Street West, and Conner Street connecting to the far southwest end of town where there is industrial property in order to create a stable, financially stable sewer, most likely enterprise, so that when it comes time for there to be expansion, the cost impact could be reduced, that the infrastructure would be in place already. And so that when we start talking about, at whatever point the community wants to pursue expanding, most likely in the residential neighborhoods, again, that would be a decision for the town, that it would potentially be more affordable by us having set this infrastructure up in place in advance in an economically targeted area.
So, but in other words, the same, the same, if this is implemented for being able to expand, let's say, down a side street that's adjacent to the main, the main line that we're talking about, it would fall under this very same, you know, bylaw in terms of how it's going to be, the cost factor is going to be? Is that right?
Madam Chair, that is correct. Although it would be a separate project, we're not expecting to bring that forward in this first iteration. And it may have a, and it likely would have, a separate financing model with separate expectations.
And Larry, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I was not looking at the sewer, let's say, the sewer project as a revenue generating project, at least not, I mean, I can see it, the benefit of it, you know, in terms of economic development down the line, certainly that would be, you know, that's the major, I guess that's the major purpose in my, in my mind for moving forward this. We need, we need to do this to change, to change things. But I, I'm not looking at this bylaw for purposes of generating revenue for the town. It's really just to give, like Mr. Studo said, some flexibility to be able to fund this, you know, really what we consider to be a necessary project. I don't know if anybody else has it, Mr. Studo.
And I'll add to Mr. Lawrence's point. Larry, just like the town administrator said, the next project could be different. So same logic, what if in that expansion, 50% is too much for the abutters, but now, hey, I'm sorry, bylaw says 50, too bad. So it works both ways. But just remember, when you don't have flexibility, it works both ways, meaning that, you know, for this one, I don't know where we're going to go. We could end up, we could end up at 50-50. Those discussions are just, you know, it's premature discussion. But again, maximum flexibility, that what if we arrive at this project or a future project where, you know, maybe it's the other way around, where through the select board, whatever the select board is at that point, and, you know, with the finance committee and talking to experts, we determine that the town should pick up more of the cost, but you know what? I'd like, I'd like for the town to pick up most of the cost, but we can't, because it says here 50%. Sorry. So again, it's just to make the point that it's about the maximum flexibility, and it's, I'm happy that question came up because it shows why we need a custom approach. Because this project may go nowhere in October, but that doesn't necessarily mean that something that, an alternative might not be proposed in the future. And again, we may run into the same thing, that, well, we need the flexibility to even bring it up. So I just wanted to say that we're kind of, we're kind of making the point as we talk through this.
Okay. Mrs.?
Yeah, just regarding that point there, all I'm saying is, I'd like to see a formal, you know, standard procedure coming up with that percentage. And I'm not sure if there's one that exists. Rather than just throw it up to majority rule, you know, that's my point on that first one. Regarding the, I think the answer about whether or not this could extend up the side street is, I think the answer to that was, yes, it can. And if it, if it is extended up the side street, then whoever is offended by that is going to be assessed a betterment, a betterment fee. So this, before there was a little bit of a safeguard in there that, you know, that allowed people on that street to veto it, basically, and that's being removed. But now in the future, if this goes up, up a side street, then everybody has to, has to cop up the money for this. And just so you know, I mean, I've been in the sewer business for over 30 years. You might say I'm an expert at this stuff. Sometimes when, you know, you look at targets, it want to put, it puts sewer everywhere because it increases, obviously increases the revenue, but it makes it, brings in, it got the capacity, and the more users they have, the lower the cost is to everybody. So there's a huge incentive to spread the sewers out and put more sewage in. You know, and that, that, that just incenses the, goes into the, into the whole process. And the last question that I, that I have is more of an engineering, again, I do computer models of sewer systems all over the country, and one of the things that happens is failure. Because I understand it, flow is going to basically go by gravity down to the town line, and there'll be a pump station that hopes it up. And so just, you know, I always think worst case when we're designing things, is what happens if the pump station fails? If they do fail, there's all kinds of things that happen. And what happens then? You know, all the sewage continues to flow down, and would there be an emergency bypass? Has that, has those kinds of design questions have been, have been asked yet? What happens during the failure? Have you guys considered that? Like the sewage, what I see in a lot of places is, you know, the failure, the sewage continues to come and it flows into people's homes, and they have, basically, sewage only not in the bathtub. And it's rather unpleasant.
Well, let's see if we can...
The only way to stop it is to put it as an emergency bypass, but that's not, generally not allowed anymore.
Let's see if we can have the town administrator speak to that. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you through you. And again, I don't want to focus too much on a specific project, particularly the design of a specific project, work for which is underway and which will be presented to the community in the coming months, far in advance of a town meeting. But I will say that we were very clear in October that we had an idea of the route that we were going to take and the means and method in which we were going to get there. But there are ongoing conversations involving multiple departments of public works and engineers about the best way to do that and the best way to connect to ultimately the treatment plant. And those will be considerations that will be worked through in that process. And to the extent that those protections can be put in place, they will be. You know, sir, from your experience, that there is, you know, always, you know, inherent issue and is, I should say inherent risk, and is inherent risk with water as well. It's something that goes along with the infrastructure in place. Same is true for stormwater as well, and we've seen that in the community. But to the extent that those things can be designed into a strategy to get the flow to the plant, that we will do so. I don't know if Public Works directly wants to add anything, but...
Just to, just to add that, you know, a lot of pump station designs, and that's what we have here, is built with redundancy, redundant pumps and backup generators as well. So, you know, you more than likely would have minimal total failure situations, but if it happened, you would probably have to some sort of bypass pumping. You can't design that into a system, but ultimately, you know, that's something that, you know, I've seen also with other sort of INI issues, just heavy rain flooding pump stations for the new system, we wouldn't have that problem. But that is all part of, you know, designing and operating a sewer treatment system.
Madam Chair, again, I don't want to take us too far off course, but I will just add to, and Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Studo are familiar with this, with their work in the water and wastewater plant, but we have invested in a substantial upgrade to our monitoring systems for water, and I expect that we'll have a similar monitoring system for wastewater as well, so that we're knowing what's happening with the system throughout the stretch, every minute of every hour of every day.
Okay. Thank you. And one, just one more, Mrs. Gonzalez?
I just want to go back to Larry's original concern about amending the bylaw, which is a two-thirds vote. And Larry, you keep saying majority, but it is two-thirds. But I have a concern now that you've brought that up, and I'm going to ask probably...
Well, Mrs. Gonzalez, it's a two-thirds vote to amend the bylaw, but when that bylaw...
No, no, general bylaws, to amend the bylaw is 50%. But to appropriate the money, to borrow money, it's two-thirds vote. To amend the bylaw is 50%, 50% to amend the bylaw.
Okay, so amend the bylaw...
Zoning bylaw is two-thirds.
I want to go back to that and his concern about, can that actually happen, the scenario he is saying about zero?
In other words, you're saying, so we go to town meeting, we don't want to pay anything? Yeah. Everybody that's adjacent to this, the town pays zero, everybody that's adjacent pays 100% of this project.
Is this scenario, can that happen? How is that going to be taken?
So, and so that would only, at a town meeting, for that, for us to effectuate, I misunderstood, too. So for us to implement this process, if this bylaw gets passed at a town meeting, that determination of percentage only requires a majority vote of those at the town meeting?
Madam Chair, no. To modify this bylaw is a majority vote. In order to do the project, any project, would be a two-thirds vote.
Because appropriation, it's a funding, it's a funding or a financial warrant that requires two-thirds of the voting members present to say yes to it, right?
That's correct, yes.
This is what happened with the Turkey Farm.
Correct, correct. We had 62% and we needed 66.
Right. I remember that. That's why I was confused, too, Mrs. Gonzalez. So to effectuate any percentage, 0, 100, 50-50, 70-30, if that's going to be presented in a warrant article for any particular project, that requires two-thirds of the voters at the town meeting to implement.
For anything that requires borrowing, so keep in mind, we do not, we know, I don't want to, you don't want to focus too much on the project, but we know the magnitude of the project, and the funding is not laying around in accounts. To fund the project, it would need to be borrowed in order for it to happen, and that will require a two-thirds vote.
And keep in mind, too, and again, we always try and identify the sources of funding for specific projects. So if they're going to have a, if town meeting were to vote, then, you know, is potentially, is it, could it happen that a town meeting decides to assess 100% of the project onto those that are going to be bettered? Sure, of course. Is that economically feasible? Probably not, you know, so renders it kind of moot. However, if it's appropriated and the project is built and the source of funding that is identified to pay for it can't fund it, when we vote at town meeting, we can identify it, but the town is still on the hook. The town meeting, the taxpayers are on the hook for the obligation. How we get there and pay for it is up to us, you know, and if we're going to try and get it through the betterments through those, just the users, good luck. If the money and the resources aren't there, we still have a project that's been built. We still have a project that has debt that town meeting voted to pay for. And again, the initial vote at town meeting is, we take on the obligation, it's a two-thirds vote, and then we're hoping to get the money over here. But if that fails, just like the Hillview, when we took the Hillview, we said Hillview Enterprise was going to pay for the debt service on that. Hillview is going to continue to pay for the debt service on that and any other project they undertake. If Hillview fails, people stop golfing. Town and authorities as a whole, and the taxpayers and the general fund are still obligated to pay those bills. So the likelihood of it being economically feasible is slim to none. So, so Larry, what we're looking for here is an opportunity to assess it appropriately and fairly. And again, what you're talking about is when we go into town meeting with a project, you're looking for the select board to be presenting something, or the community planning commission, or the finance committee, all have recommendations and all have votes and raise their hands at town meeting and have it count. In order to get that money, you need two-thirds vote. You know, so, I mean, if there's a project, a smaller project, where it makes sense that those that are just along the roadway can pursue a project, you know, then sure, it can be done. Unlikely.
All right. I just want to make sure we got all Mrs. Gonzalez's questions out of the way, too. Were you all set, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I want to make sure Larry understands, yeah.
You know, and Larry, you also asked, and this is specific to the project, and I clouding issue here. We are purchasing a certain amount of capacity with the Great Alara Sewer District, you know, to pump a certain amount of effluent up there. What we're proposing for a project in the fall is probably only going to be about 50% of that capacity, approximately?
Less than.
Less than 50% of the capacity. So yes, if and when this gets passed in the fall, more than 50% of the capacity that we're purchasing today, the rights to do it, we're paying for upfront and over time, over 25, 20, 30 years, we're going to be paying for that. But we're going to have the ability to expand down into the Martins Pond area, into, you know, Verdade Neatham Street, and maybe down to Southwick Road, depending upon where. Keep in mind, though, that would be a... Keep in mind though, that would be a separate project, separately funded, and the betterments could be different, only because the infrastructure will already be in place. So we're very cognizant of it in relation to the future expansion, because we're buying that capacity. But we're also cognizant of trying to make it economically feasible for single-family residences, from both a public health and environmental standpoint, be able to do that. But, you know, we made a conscious decision to go with the project that's what we're going to be proposing this fall, which isn't the whole full-blown capacity-taking project. And each project's going to be standing on its own. How it's allocated, the cost, again, if you've got more than 50% of the allocation right now, you know, the town is on the hook for all of that as a whole. And we're going to try and make it economically feasible so that the property owners along Route 28, Park Street, and Conca Street can afford it, as well as, I live in an area of town that isn't going to get sewage, but is there an economic benefit to me if this takes place? I believe so, and there's a number that should be attached to that, and I actually have an obligation to pay for it. So, you know, we have a lot of educating to do, and these are very good and valid questions. I don't believe that you're common in relation to changing the rules midstream here. That's not the case, because all we got was $2.8 million to do the design, to find out what it's going to cost, so that we can figure out how we can allocate it. The bylaw hinders our ability to do that.
Well, just, if you could, just, you know, during the, when you mentioned the presentation, just make sure that the town knows that the decision to go up these side streets will inflict betterment on them, that they will be basically assessed and have to pay. And so, and it's not going to be paid for by 50%. I haven't heard anything yet that says how you're going to assess how much it's going to be. It could very well be zero.
Okay. I think, I think before we get too far afield, because we, that is going to be the subject of an entirely separate town meeting too, Larry, so as we, I don't want to get too far off of the topic of what we're, we are discussing here, which is the bylaw amendment. So I know Mr. Studo has some things to say, but I also want to make sure we have anyone else that has any questions to have the opportunity to be able to ask too.
Can I just ask a question of Larry? Just a quick question, Larry, in relation to, you're looking for a floor of a minimum townwide contribution rather than a potential zero?
Which is what it was before, he said, 50%.
Well, it's 50/50, but it-
Yeah, like some standard procedure that's followed, so that it's just simply not majority rule, like 0% at town meetings. It should be a fair formula that's used, in whether it comes up 50% or 30%. It just shouldn't be like, that people on the other side of town that don't have any, you know, direct benefit to this, you know, it shouldn't be that, it shouldn't be that puts them out as a decision point, because everybody in town is going to benefit from this. And that's my main point.
I understand, fair point, thank you.
Or some formula that follows, but just simply not, you know, 0 to 100, it should be a little bit more, more, more than that.
Fair point.
And that's my, my concern. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Also, just-
Mr. Studo.
And then again, yeah, probably, but the thing about the side streets or anything else future to any intended project, what I've learned in life, if we start attaching what-ifs, nothing ever gets done. There is no progress. So if a presentation starts having every single what-if, side street this, down to what-if, all of a sudden, we get really creative and go shot all the way down 62 and by my host, the Middleton, which I'm not saying it would happen, but that's a what-if. So I'm just saying, everyone can bring up a what-if scenario, and I just feel like the best we can do as a board in this community is look at things at the merits of what's in front of us, like what we're talking about right now. And although I do understand, Larry, what you said, by the way, I don't want to make it seem like I don't, it just that, I think we get to a point where if we start just attaching what-ifs to everything we discuss, it's just going to be a circle. That's it. I mean, you'll just go in a circle. And usually, what-if is a way to postpone things from getting done. So I'm just going to be really honest about that. So that's all I have to say about it.
And it's important to have the, just, we don't have this, we don't have very much of an opportunity like this presenting itself. It doesn't come along very often. And the opportunity to be able to expand it, I think, is a key component to me being brought on board with this idea, in addition to the economic development. So, you know, that, give that opportunity to residents along the side streets or other, you know, neighborhoods along the side streets. It still is going to follow that, that process, so, but it would be, you wouldn't be able to define, I don't think, until you knew what the cost was going to be. So I think we're shifting off of really what we're trying to explain here with the bylaw, you know, in projecting, you know, what future, you know, future, where this is going to track in the future, but we're not even there yet, and we have to have the ability. I think that's the whole purpose of this amendment. We're not there, and we have to have the ability to be able to modify it. Though, again, as Mr. O'Leary said, you know, your point is, you know, your point is well taken and well explained. And I think it's, I think that's what Don is saying too, in the letter. He's trying to say something.
And Don is saying that he thinks the bylaw for some betterment speaks a lot of sense, that's a direct quote, and he thinks that it ought to be uniformly applied to all betterment. That's the gist of what he's saying.
So we do have to, no, we have other comment here, and we want to make sure that other people do have the opportunity to speak on this, but we appreciate your input and questions, Larry, as well. So let me see if I can, it's saying the focus, Bill is saying the focus is on the 50% and its rigidity, proposing, amending, 25 to 4, the sewer portion, oh, section 25 to 4, the sewer portion of the bylaws. Why not amend 25-3, the water supply portion of the bylaws, at the same time using the same rationale? Dear Lord, Mr. Gilberto answered that one. We're trying to keep it simple, but-
Madam Chair, thank you. And I think that, I think that does kind of go to the spirit of Mr. Keller's question from earlier as well. And the answer that I'll provide is that I know that, you know, when the bylaw was, we know that when the bylaw was created, really the only practical area where it could be applied would be for street repaving, sidewalk construction, and stormwater management. While sewer is identified in the bylaw as written, it was not a practical feasible option, because there's nowhere to which to pump or drain the sewer tube. There was such a substantial investment that needed to be made in order to provide that as an option anywhere in town, that as I mentioned earlier, Mr. O'Leary identified, we really need to give ourselves that flexibility, particularly on the front end of the project, but for any subsequent project that might come up as well. And so the short answer is, we felt that it was a very different scenario that was far more challenging to implement than any of the other areas. We have a stormwater system that has outfalls. We have paved streets that connect to unpaved streets, and we have a water supply system that goes virtually throughout town. It's much more feasible and possible for these, those projects to occur. When you talk about the sewer projects, this is a much different scenario, many obstacles, and for which we're investing a significant amount of time to identify the right funding model for it to proceed.
But I think the, is it Bill? I think he's saying we should use the same model for 25-3. That might be something we take up though at a separate time.
And not something that I think, we said you're opposed to, candidly. I think we more were focused on being respectful of the history behind the bylaw and why the sewer was different. But I think that that's certainly something we can look to for an upcoming town meeting. We should do that. And I think you addressed Mr. Keller's concern too.
Okay.
And again, excuse me, the current bylaw in relation, well, to everything at this, including sewage, talks about private streets, not public ways. It talks about private streets, you know, like in, too, public hearing, abudders on private streets must vote on whether they want their street converted to a public street. So these are private ways that are looking to become public streets, while private ways that the town is looking to have accepted and put into the formula for money, state funds, to put it on the roadmap so that we get the mileage and put it on there. So what's it going to cost to do that? So in the private streets, under the current bylaw, that's where the majority of the people on the street that are going to be impacted, the abudders, have their say. 50% of the majority of people on the street that are going to be impacted have to vote, yes, we want to do it, then it'll be a 50/50 split. We're not talking about public ways.
I think 25-3 is mentioning public ways, but it's mentioning it in the context of improving the infrastructure that's there and assessing how the, how the formula is going to be assessed for improving it.
Right, but it doesn't necessarily allow for people on public ways, where it's going to be impacted, to take a vote.
It doesn't, right.
No, it's only the private ways, so let's not get confused with what the current bylaw allows for. You know, forget the 50/50 split, but as far as expanding into other neighborhoods, if they're a private street, private way, yeah, the bylaw still stands in relation to everything but sewage, what we're proposing, forget sewage, pull that out. But in public ways, different.
Yes, you're, I see. You're right, Bill, one step at a time. That's what we're trying to do here. All right. And you can see these aren't easy discussions that we have, because we already have it to a warrant article, and we're still going back and forth on it. So we have, just, is there anyone else that has any question? We've really talked about this for quite a bit. But if there's anything else in terms of the purpose for this, or anyone else that's in attendance that has questions? Nobody. All right. Well, thank you for, thank you for the questions and the participation in that one. We'll look forward to seeing everyone at the meeting too to further the discussion on it. And we'll go to the next one, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is one more article. Article 27, appropriated funds for forestry consultants for the Swan Pond Forest area. This was requested by the town's forestry committee. And we authorized funding for a consultant under the direction of the forestry committee to provide conceptual plans for trail improvements on approximately 270 acres of town-owned land in the area of Swan Pond. The amount proposed is $65,000, proposed to be funded from free cash to be expended by the forestry committee. I will note, it is for funding a consultant to design, to identify conceptual plans. Does not involve construction, we're not constructing trails under here. There may be access to the property that's required in order to evaluate it, but this is only for conceptual plan. Both the select board and the finance committee have previously voted to recommend consulting.
And it only pertains to Swan Pond?
That is correct, Swan Pond Forest area.
So when people see the word trail lately, they're getting nervous about that, but there are existing trails, and the premise behind this was, when it was presented to us, to make it more accessible to the public. It's a beautiful, it's beautiful land, and it's not as accessible as it could be, so that's the whole premise behind this. Does anybody have any questions or comments with regard to this?
Super quick question. Do we know-
Noah, Noah Spicer.
Yeah, sorry, Noah Spicer, 13 Swan Pond Road. Do we know if the consultant in the area of trail improvements would be looking at improved parking for the so-called Trailhead in that area in addition to the trail improvements?
I can answer.
Yes, Mr. Wallner.
Yes, that is the intention, is to take control of the parking, to make it more accessible, to make it also safe for ADA, you know, be ADA compliant as much as you can in that situation. And the goal is also to control access from motor vehicles that are in there now that should not be in there. So, yeah, thank you.
It'll be giving us plans that we'll be, then they'll present them to us, we can take a look at them here and see if they're feasible.
I'll have more questions as it goes along.
Mrs. Harrowman?
I think that the last time the discussion concerned the article 27, it was suggested that this is not a preamble to an article going, you know, in another year, that would be for much larger quantities of money to establish trails and facilities or whatever at the town forest. That if I understand it, Mr. Wallner can correct me, the idea was that there might, that there would be various town volunteers that would help to satisfy the designs that the consultant had come up with, to blaze the trail, as it were. Because I think there was a certain amount of apprehension, that one thing leads to another, and next year you could see a request for, I don't know, $350,000 to establish trails, parking lots, this, that, and the other thing. I don't believe that's the intention of this committee.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, I mean, we, there's going to be no paving of the existing trails, any new trails we create would still be dirt, you know, natural materials, other than probably around the parking areas. And if we did some parking areas, you know, we'd be coming back more to the town to help us, you know, do, it'd be modest improvements, I would imagine. And as far as labor is concerned, we've already had Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts volunteer to help us do work. We have a connection with Essex Aggie who would help us do some of the destruction of signs, if we do some sort of signage. So I can imagine a modest budget for lumber of some sort, of those kind of things, but I can't imagine $350,000. I've looked at throughout the state what other people have done, I've never seen those kind of numbers.
That was a mythical number that I pulled out.
I just wanted to put us in the zone that I haven't, I saw numbers of, you know, 60,000, 80,000 around there.
My point is that this is not a feasibility study that is based on the assumption there's going to be a much bigger and more expanded request going further. My understanding is not.
There is not our intention to ask for any big money coming up. But the intention is, and actually what normally happens is when you get the consultant involved, they reach out to the community, and typically it turns into a friends of the Swan Pond Trails. And then you start to get more and more volunteers involved. I'm not saying there's going to be some infrastructure need to just get us off the hump, but I think it's small dollars, and, you know, labor will be taken care of by volunteers.
And but my understanding, there was, there was not going to be any alteration of this. We're not putting in a soccer field here, or, you know, a boat ramp or anything.
Parking would be the most aggressive thing we would do.
Right. It's more to kind of promote the accessibility and, you know, signs and more information of it.
I think it's a hidden gem, and if you ask people where Swan Pond is, I don't even know how to get there.
Swan Pond, not the issue, it's the town forest.
Okay, so does that answer your question, Mrs. Harrowman?
It doesn't, dear.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions with regard to? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public informational here.
Can I just comment on that?
Sure.
I think you'll be introducing this. Can you give Ally a chance to take the lead to show her slides?
I guess so.
So if you can introduce, that'd be great.
Of course. Sure. As long as it's there, it takes 30 seconds or less.
You saw the slides, she's brief, she's quick. It's so new for people, that it's, you know, it'd just be good to introduce.
All right.
Thank you.
That's good. So that ends that informational hearing, and everybody has their assignments. So thank you, everybody, for who was attending and joined us for that. We'll move on to the next order of business, which is a vote to schedule a show cause hearing for the Thompson Club violation hearing. hearing for the Thompson Club violation hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Did I, did I miss something?
No, you did not.
All right.
But there is a motion without time written into it.
Yeah.
Mr. Walner. So I expect that at the meeting of the thirteenth, we will have a few things going on. First would be the annual water rate and capital plan hearing, which I don't anticipate will be a terribly long hearing. The second may be further presentation.
Take the last words.
The second would be a presentation from one of our consultants relative to the sewer project, which I expect will be substantial in time, if we can put it on that agenda. So, and I know Madam Chair and I haven't had a chance to discuss, but I wonder if it makes sense to plan to go into open session a bit earlier than we have, at seven o'clock P.M., and start with this hearing and then move into those other matters? Or we can alternatively, I could suggest, we could make it very late in the evening as well, but we will have police department representatives that will be waiting to present. So I don't know what the board's pleasure is, but I'm kind of thinking, maybe we put it for early and go through it, go in the acts at this point, and then we can move into the water rate hearing and then into the, by eight o'clock hopefully, the presentation from the consultants on wastewater.
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth, yes.
That's, that's a whole lot of hearings in one meeting, so.
Another option is to defer action on this hearing. We should do the water rate hearing on the thirteenth, but if we wanted to defer this, we could move into, I think, the eleventh, the next regular meeting.
So we have the water rate here.
Potential presentation from our sewer consultant.
And then our next scheduled meeting is July eleventh.
That's correct, yes.
Wow, that's a big gap. So. And so you're asking to move it up because you have, we're going, can't we have our law enforcement join us virtually? And then we just alert them when it's time for the disciplinary hearing?
We can, we can do that.
Because I would.
But the party also would have counsel, I would imagine, and want to be present also.
Of course, of course. I would expect them to be here.
I would think so.
Yes, yes, but Michael's, Mr. Gilberto's concern is making our law enforcement hang around until that time.
So I think somebody waits, no matter what, most likely Mr. Parisi D., can you remind them? It's just an anecdotal running.
Well, I mean, and unfortunately, this, I think this should be, we handle our business and then this, and this could be scheduled after all of that, so let's be realistic about the timeframe, though. We can't put this on at eight fifteen when we have two other, you know, public hearings ahead of it, or, excuse me, water rate hearing and informational hearing, so let's be realistic.
The water rate hearing.
The water rate hearing?
Yep. The presentation by the sewer consultants and this hearing on the Thompson Club.
And I don't think we should be upending our business because we have to address a disciplinary hearing, that, that should be, quite frankly, they should wait to be, you know, heard until we get our business done with the other matters. There's, that's a disciplinary hearing, so.
But it was a first budget, I just kind of.
That would be my thought, but anybody have any issue with that? I just think we should really carefully plan it out so that we're not.
I have no problem starting a half an hour earlier, because again, I don't anticipate the water rate hearing, I haven't heard anything as far as the water rate hearing, saying we're looking for any huge increases in water rates.
Not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge. So that should be pretty routine. The consultant coming in is going to be time consuming.
Right.
So I mean, so if we start a half an hour earlier with this show cause hearing, then the only one's inconvenient for us, I guess.
Right.
The extra half an hour.
We have to add this now into our docket, you know, so, so that, to me, should, we should be tending to.
Do you want to start a half an hour earlier or add a half an hour later?
In other words, six thirty.
Or add a half an hour later.
Six thirty versus seven.
Half an hour later doesn't cut into my paycheck. Half an hour early, it does.
I'm okay with six thirty.
Yes.
About seven o'clock.
Yeah, well, we, we're not doing, so no, just start right in.
Oh, no executives?
It would, my recommendation would be a half hour executive session, six thirty to seven, and then open session, rather than a full hour.
Well, what is there?
Well, six thirty's our norm.
Well, what is there besides that?
Those are the three items that are, the liaison assignments are pretty routine. There's not anything that I think is going to be of substance, you know, or overly time consuming, be on those three right now.
I have my liaison assignments for this evening.
So that'll be real quick.
Hold on.
So it's, if the board wants to begin at seven, and what, we're going to tend to, you know, what do you factor in, thirty minutes for a water rate?
I think.
An hour for the sewer presentation?
I think that'd be fair.
Or more, or more?
It could go more than an hour, and that's why I kind of hate to book anything with anything on the front side.
Exactly, exactly.
As much as I don't.
Yeah.
Want to adjust our schedule to disciplinary issue, I just, my worry is it could be one.
So.
Well, what is bad about punting it to July? Or do we want to make like a decision on that earlier?
Yeah, I think we should just.
I think we should take some timely action on what's been presented to us.
Right.
I agree.
So executive session at six thirty and public session at seven.
That's fine, I mean, six thirty's usually after hours, so that's fine.
Seven-ish, seven, seven fifteen, we can start at seven fifteen to seven forty-five is the rate, water rate hearing.
You're already baking in fifteen minutes, like.
Seven forty-five to eight, seven forty-five to eight forty-five is a sewer, maybe nine, nine fifteen is a sewer presentation? And they'll be third on the docket after that, so.
Five fifteen minutes.
Plus or minus.
You don't have to, you don't need to tie it in.
Plus or minus sixty minutes.
Make them nine thirty.
Your notice can just advise them to appear, because they'll be on the docket for a disciplinary hearing, so maybe we get done earlier, and we can, you know, have it earlier. It's not as though you're publishing in the paper a disciplinary matter.
We can ask, we normally give them the time for the hearing itself, but to your point, I think we could give them the time of the public session of the meeting and when we get to a meeting.
Okay. And that's primarily the business we're going to be addressing in the next meeting, unless there's other things that are coming.
There are, there is other business, it's not.
Okay, well.
No, that is not important, but it should not be timed, so.
Okay. All right, so we are scheduling that show cause hearing to be held at our next meeting of the board.
Yes.
Right, do we need a vote on that?
We do.
Let's have a vote on that.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to schedule a show cause hearing for Thompson Club Incorporated doing business as Pro Shop for Monday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Is it a time or no time? It said seven?
No time, right?
Seven.
Oh, seven fifteen, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Seven o'clock.
At seven fifteen P.M.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
No, no.
No, we're like Comcast, between seven and eleven.
We're not scheduling them to appear at seven.
I thought we weren't scheduling.
We just said the exact opposite of that.
So we have to give them a date and time to attend.
We have to give them a date that the hearing is going to be held, right?
Do you have to give them a time?
No.
I have to tell them what time to come to town hall.
They can come to the meeting, because it's going to be on the docket to be addressed when we reach it on the docket. You do have to schedule a water rate hearing at a specific time, which was seven fifteen, we just talked about this, seven fifteen, right? And then your presentation follows that, which we don't have to schedule at a set time. And then we can do the disciplinary hearing after that, which doesn't need a scheduled time, it just needs a scheduled date.
Okay, we'll, we'll address it in a little bit, I guess, no time.
That's why I left it off, so I had, I never set the time.
Right.
Yeah, okay? Do you want me to say it again, or are we good?
Go ahead.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to schedule a show cause hearing for Thompson Club Incorporated doing business as Pro Shop for Monday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary, any, Mr. O'Leary?
While this may be a disciplinary hearing, it's also a local business in the community who made a mistake, has a right to be heard, and I think we should be courteous. And I don't think it's, it shouldn't be punitive, I believe they should have a specific time to come and be heard. And I don't think it's unreasonable to put them on at seven o'clock, and then we can handle the rest of the business. Yet based upon what we know is going to be on the agenda, I don't think they should be punished and forced to sit here until nine fifteen, nine thirty, or ten o'clock at night.
No one's punishing them.
Well, it appears.
A baby, I don't know.
No, it appears, it appears.
Depends what the board decides at the public hearing.
Without giving them a specific time, it appears as though, and it sounds as though, and you set the agenda, Madam Chair, it appears as though it's not your intention to put them first on the agenda, it's your intention to put them at the end, or towards the end.
Because I don't want to punish our regular individuals that have to be here for our meeting after working for the day, these are our employees, too, and our consultants, those people are being punished by having to sit through a disciplinary hearing.
These people are local businesses, local taxpayers, and again, they made a mistake, we have an obligation to, to address it, and I, again, it appears punitive to me, and I.
So it's up to the, I'm just one, I don't think it's fair to have to put them first in the queue when we have other businesses.
Madam Chair, I move to amend to a time specific of seven P.M.
Motion to amend the motion, do I have a second? Okay, hearing done. Will be revert, that motion fails, so we do have a motion on the floor to schedule it for June thirteenth. Do we have a second?
I already seconded it.
You seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Motion, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, next order of business, K.P. Law consent regarding regional housing services office, vote to approve and sign. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have before you a recommendation or request from K.P. Law, who is town council, to acknowledge and consent to their representing the town in review of an intermunicipal agreement between North Reading and other communities for our regional housing services office. The planning departments and the other departments involved in the administration of this intermunicipal agreement are recommending changes to it, one of which is to allow for the services to be administered by a contractor rather than employer, than employee of one of the member communities. K.P. is also town council for another community, the town of Wilmington, that is a party to this agreement, and so they are recommending that this vote be taken and that the subsequent form be signed, but if it's not, it's assigned for, or been printed at the end of the meeting with regard to this. I've reviewed this with the town planner, I'm comfortable that, that the town's interests will continue to be protected in this review. And we've all talked about this agreement during annual budget, we know what it does, it's for monitoring of our compliance with subsidized housing inventory in particular, so it's an important function. And I'm recommending that the board vote to approve and assign the disclosure.
Okay, any questions? Do we have a vote?
Okay.
Do we have a motion, I mean, not a vote?
We do. Madam Chair, I move to determine pursuant to rule one, one point seven, is that what you said? One point seven of the Massachusetts Rule of Professional Conduct at the North Reading Select Board consents to K.P. Law, P.C., representing the town of North Reading, the town with regards to the intermunicipal agreement for a common regional housing services office with the towns of Reading, Saugus, and Wilmington, and the city of Woburn, as discussed, as disclosed in a letter to the town dated May second, two thousand and twenty-two. Notwithstanding that K.P. Law, P.C., also serves as town council for the town of Wilmington, and has signed the determination dated June first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next order of business is public comment. Do we have any public comment? None. Next order of business, town administrators, but Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize, but I have to read my report from my phone this evening. I just will note that the police department will be hosting a free rape aggression defense course this summer. There'll be two four-day sessions, one in June and one in August, and I attached the flyer, which is also available through the police department's social media platforms. Secondly, as the board knows, the fire department is anticipating a handful of vacancies to occur over the course of the next fiscal year, including one vacancy that was created by a transfer earlier this fiscal year. We've had difficulty identifying suitable candidates from the so-called paramedic service lists. While we expect to be able to fill the existing vacancy with a paramedic, we will need to consider alternative strategies in order to maintain proper staffing levels in the department moving forward. That's something that the fire chief, myself, my image director, the public safety director have been discussing, and will bring back to the select board for further discussion over the course of the summer, but I just want to make the board aware, that it's something that we are looking at based on those vacancies that we've talked openly about in the budgeting process. And Madam Chair, I believe that concludes my comments.
Can I just read that, for the course that you mentioned, the, the contact info on the flyer says to contact Detective Mike Marra, nine seven eight three five seven five oh five seven, or email M.M.A.R.R.A. at N.R.P.D. dot org, and there's also some contact information to look, it's a, it's called RAD, R-A-D, the rape aggression defense course for women. All right, the classes are from six to nine P.M. for those that want to join after work or after school. Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Gilberto? Any, all right, we're going to go to old and new business, Mr. O'Leary?
Uh, let's see.
And board member reports, I'm sorry.
The board member reports, I mean, so again, that's a meeting, wastewater, Mr. Studo and I, along with the administration, meeting rather regularly these days, and again, we're hoping to have our consultant talk about the betterment proposals and how it's going to be assessed, and all the rest will be giving us an update as to where they are in their phase of the, the contract, so that's going to be important and informative for everybody. The, the other thing I want to, a couple things I want to comment on was, what, I thought the parade, it was nice to be back on, on the parade route, first time in three years, and it was nice to see Mount Vernon Street, was relatively smooth with no potholes, and town administration got a good workout pulling the wagon with a couple of boys in it, and.
In on top of it, out of it.
Out of it, because we got run over by the Little League a few times, overtaken by the Little League, but it was great to be back out there, and nice to see everybody involved, and, you know, good turnout on the roadside, too, and Ms. Gonzalez, it was a terrific address that she made, and very appropriate, and the comments were well-received, so thank you for that. The other thing is, just want to urge people, come to town meeting Monday night, we have some business to tend to, as you saw this evening, and we want your participation, we want your input, and we want to hear from you, so come down and have your voice heard and your vote counted. And then on a more sad note, we had a passing of a former employee, James, Jimmy Lobster Burke, who was a longtime employee of the Department of Public Works, retired, a member of Public Works, but wonderful fellow, well-loved and beloved by everybody, his fellow workers and the community as a whole, again, he born and raised in North Reading, and untimely passing, so to his family, you know, our condolences, and, but what a wonderful fellow. Everybody loved him, everybody knew him, so it was great. So to Jimmy's brother Hank and the rest of his family, our condolences. And that, Madam Chair, all said, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Walner?
Okay, so I, with Allison Toledo from the Forest Committee, we went to the CPC meeting during the last meeting, and we presented there, and they were all in favor of it and everything else like that. So I stayed during the meeting, and what has continued to be on my mind is the accessory dwelling units, that that's kind of sitting in their basket right now, they're supposed to be working on a policy for that, so at the end of the meeting, I asked if they could kind of revive that, because that hasn't come up to the surface in a long time. It ended up in a long discussion. Basically, they wanted to know, are we as a board still in support of pursuing an accessory dwelling unit policy? Because they felt a little bit from the affordable housing overlay, that they felt we were on board, and then when we get to town meeting, we weren't on board. And so they're a little bit nervous about, you know, if they hear from us that we still support going after that policy, then they're more willing to step up and revive it, but at this point, they're feeling not supported by the board, based on their experience from based on their experience from the previous meeting, which is another discussion. So, as a reminder, accessory dwelling units is putting in laws allowing our, specifically our older overhoused seniors to have family and/or aides live in the house with them, so they can stay in town and not have to move out. That's the primary purpose of the accessory dwelling unit, and to also build in some safety that there's permits being done, that people are already doing it now unofficially, you know, under the radar. This would be a way to make it more official and make it more, you know, a upfront opportunity for people as opposed to, we're not doing anything about it. So, I just wanted to get a read from the select board about that.
I don't want, I know you're not finished with your presentation, but we'll ask the membership, but I think Mr. Studo has a question too.
I couldn't make the last one, but Rich, was there any movement on the actual CPC? The last consensus I saw, it seemed like that depending on the day, they didn't have even three votes for it.
There, there's one or two items that are still, they're a little headlocked on. But when I brought it to their town, again, I was just asking, would you look at it again? And then it turned into a whole nother thing.
Yeah, no, that's.
It went a whole nother way, but they, at the end, they said, thanks for bringing it up, we really should get this one resolved. We just want to know that the, the select board, and I suggest, I suggested, if you're getting stuck in a few points, why don't you come and meet with us to discuss it with, and we'd be happy to give you some input. So, that was my offering to that, but yeah, is there still a logjam?
Yeah, well, thank you, that was my only.
I believe there is, I believe there still is a logjam that I think they should be able to get resolved. I don't think, we're not the first community to put with accessory dwelling unit policy. I think there's communities that do it routinely, and it's been successful, so.
There was a, did we actually, I'm going to have to refresh my memory, did we actually read through a proposed bylaw or change?
No, no, there was, there was some, because I think they, the last time it was formally discussed was a couple months ago now.
Yep, yep, yep.
I think that it was a discussion that, really, it started as a safety issue, right? With, with Jerry finding that in a lot of inspections, you could tell that these things were already there. And he, I think it was something where, you know, does it make sense to look at something where we standardize it? So, you, that becomes a moot point, and then, I think it became a bigger thing, and that's where, you know, then there was some drafts by Danielle McKnight.
Yep.
But what happened is then, that one of the drafts went much further than, and, you know, that, again, depending on the day and the conversation, there was either two against or three against, depending on what it was, and then it was like non-committal. So, I think the last formal discussion they had is that it just, it had grown into something that the majority of the members had not foreseen, so they just couldn't really move it forward and that, and then that was the last I've heard of it formally.
So, they're still in the drafting phase, in other words?
Well, they're more than draft, but they're stuck in a few points, but then what they were saying to me is that we're not only stuck in a few points, we just don't even want to come forward with this if the select board doesn't want it. Does a select board want an A D U policy? That's basically what they were asking.
And in that, I'll just add, and then maybe, you know, I, I think I had mentioned to them as well that the issue becomes that I feel with, like, planning things like that, we take a lot of weight of the CPC, right? So, if you come in here and you start asking us to help you do your job and like this, this is more than just help us do our job. This is like, can you write it, not write it for us, I don't want to put words in their mouth. So, I think that, that's why a couple of them are hesitant, right? So, I'm surprised they actually wanted to come here, because then it becomes, well, is it the CPC's policy? Or has it become select board's policy?
I think it's meaning and intending to go back to the, to the lots that were proposed for sale. And that came to our attention during the warrant article, because it was, we wanted to, we were divided in terms of support and non-support for that. So, we just agreed to pass it, pass it over, I think, for another meeting. We really haven't taken it up as an article now for that afforded, those affordable parcels.
Yeah.
So, the, that's probably what they mean, is that they put something forward that went to warrant for town meeting. They didn't get our full support on that, so they're probably maybe a little.
That is a sore spot.
Reticent to, reticent to put this.
I didn't know where you were going with that.
My last.
I'm assuming that's what you're.
I, I, so, if you want to shed light on that, they were, they immediately pointed back to that.
Yeah, that's what I assumed.
Yes.
Basically, what they said was, the select board reviewed this policy years ago, you created the policy, we bring forward an opportunity, and then we shut it down, and they felt like it was.
Yeah, I don't remember looking at an accessory unit.
No, 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 two separate ones, two separate.
I'll tell you about the affordable housing.
So, the affordable housing was those four lots that they were going to build on, that they wanted to build for Habitat for Humanity. That was at town meeting, and when it came up for town meeting, we, we rejected it.
Right, I do recall that, because it, it was the first time we were looking at it.
So, I was asking about.
One of them was Chestnut Street too, which had quite a few residents opposed to it.
Well, it was a water.
Havel Street to the butts, Chestnut Village.
I think from that sore point that they're scared to come on.
Yeah.
To me, I explained to them that if you come in front of the CPC with the A D U, and you're this divided, if you come in front of us, right, if two or three of your members, and let's say, one is kind of neutral, but then two make a point of why maybe the select board should get behind this, but the other two undercut them, then it becomes, it's almost like, I don't want to say it like this, but like, almost like, get your own house in order and then come here, because then it puts us in a spot where we're not, you know what I mean? I, I never wanted as liaison, I told them, like, the select, the select board can't play tiebreaker here. You guys have five members, right? Like, did you get that sense too, that sometimes it was like, I just feel like if they don't come here with kind of a united front, it just makes it difficult for us to support.
Can I just, can I just ask a, again, I haven't been attending it all, but, does it appear to be a majority support for some sort of accessory unit, dwelling unit, but, you know, policy? I would think that there'll be a yes.
That, that was a complete yes.
That's a complete yes, and now it's a question of how far does it go?
Right, exactly.
They're there like, see, I'm talking like, it's like red and green apart.
Okay, so, so, at least they're on board that there needs to be an accessory dwelling, apartment dwelling policy or bylaw. So, that's a good thing.
And we're on board with that, it meets our strategic planning.
So, that's, that's okay, now, so the thing is, so there's common ground there, and it's just a question of how far does it go? So, they should just figure out how far they're with it and propose that. Then it's going to be amended later on, get it on the books, get it going, get something going.
And remind me.
And again, and even when they come before us, I don't know what the proposals are. I may want, may not want to go as far, I may want to go further than their proposal, you know, which again, creates some friction and differences of opinion.
And Rich, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't the biggest thinking point whether it was detached versus attached?
I can't even remember.
I think that was one of the bigger ones, right?
It's in here, but it doesn't matter.
But yeah, and, and again, so, but yeah.
Convert some sheds into.
No, but thank you for updating that, yeah, I didn't make the last one.
But let me just add, I, I don't have any problem with them coming in and conferring with us where they're stuck, because, like, we're pretty good at deliberating, that's what we do. And there's a lot of projects that come through, there's a lot of projects that come through here, forget policy, there's a lot of projects that come through here where we're deliberating, and we're going back and forth, and people, you know, things get better through deliberation, right? So, if, I, I don't care if they're stuck, if they come in and they want to discuss where they're at with it, I, I'm sure we could be giving them some good feedback. So, I don't need them to come in with a united front, I don't even care that, personally, I just, let's get it going. Let's, let's get it, let's get it happening.
Happy discussion.
And if we're stuck, I'd be happy to deliberate, you know, as opposed to voting yes or no.
Right, like Mr. O'Leary said to, on the real, oh, I don't even want to mention the words, but, you know, we don't say no, and that.
We're talking about brutal.
We don't really say no if something comes to, you know, completion, and it goes on the warrant article, you know, we don't say no.
I want to be supportive, or I want to have, you know, clarity as to what my position's going to be. So, I'd be happy to deliberate with them.
Yeah.
You know, okay, where are you at? We all agree that we want to see something, okay, now, where are we at?
We can't do it next meeting, I know, it'll be at nine forty-five, so, it'll be at ten o'clock.
But again, even if they're at a logjam, you know, bring the logjam to us, and let's, let's, let's air it out, let's talk about it.
Let's work on it.
Let's talk about it, because again, we want to be united with the select board and the planning commission and finance committee going to town meeting, if we can be.
No, 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 I, I, listen, Leanne's now, Leanne's now the liaison for that. At the next meeting, you can go and say, A D U's is on our strategic goals, I'd be happy to go as well, because I think they want to hear from me, just, because they, they talked to me for half an hour about it, but I'm happy to go in and support. And at the same time, you know, we invite them in to come and, you know, show us what they got, you know, work it through.
This is not, we're sort of behind in terms of putting that forward, because there's many communities that have those.
Yeah.
So, it's not like they're inventing something new, however, they're certainly planning just for what our community is like.
But there's also a tolerance level as to what people want in their neighborhoods.
Sure, right, sure.
As opposed to what's already in the neighborhoods.
Yeah, as opposed to what's already there.
That's right.
Yeah. So, I think we need to kind of build bridges, I'm inviting them, I think inviting them in for this one, and then I'm sure the affordable housing one's going to come up that we should, I always expected from that, that different topic, the affordable housing, that I always expected they were going to come back to talk to us more about that.
Come back, they never came.
And that basically is, in their mind, that's a timeout, they're not doing anything on that.
No, well, I think we have to make a decision in relation to those parcels. Again, I'm in support of doing those sorts of things that they were proposing, but I think we should be delineating the wetlands, know what we have, and decide what's going, how it's going to be developed.
Again.
You know, so that means they have an appropriation of money, and spending the money to have it delineated, and say, now we know what we can do with these parcels instead of having someone else commit and doing it. So, and if that's what our policy's going to be, you know, to them, you know, say, listen, we're, we're in favor of this stuff. You identify the parcels, we'll get the resources for you to, we'll give you money to get a consultant to get the, get the work done, and then present it to us, okay, this is what's going to be proposed here, you know, five units, two units, one unit, whatever it's going to be, based upon what can be done, and we'll know, it's our land, we should know what can be done with it.
Right.
So, it's, and we're partnering with somebody.
Okay.
An nonprofit.
So, we'll deliver the message, A D U's is the strategic goal for us, and you're welcome to come and deliberate, so we can move ahead.
Come on and bring us what your draft is, so we can maybe give you some info.
Next meeting.
Not the next meeting, no. Not next meeting, the meeting after that.
No, it's, I don't know when they're meeting again next, so don't worry.
Anything else, Mr. Wallner?
Just weird, we got this, Michael, we got this thing from N V R T A, they're asking if we want to ban or not, so Dan Breenberg requested a ban. And it looks like we're going to get a ban, I don't know how that happened. So, I don't know how that happened, I don't know, I don't know either. Well, listen, we made the deadline, we've made it by May thirty-first, we signed up for a ban. N V R T wants to give us a mobility ban for our senior citizens.
Ban, I thought you said banned, like V A N.
A mobility, a mobility ban.
I can have a ban here if you want.
And so, we did every, we hit the deadline, and it sounds like all we had to do was sign up, and this is what happens when I finally go to a board meeting a month before.
It gets a new ban.
That's great.
Suddenly.
We was open there.
I guess sometimes showing up makes a difference.
Does that require a vote, or do you need to look at that, right?
Is it brand new?
There's probably need some sort of agreements.
Yeah. All right, anyways, that's fun stuff.
It's on the thirteenth, that should be quick.
Probably a hundred thousand dollars, who knows, maybe one, that's it, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Gonzalez. First of all, I would like to concur with Mr. O'Leary, it was so good to be back out on the parade route and with everybody and celebrating, not celebrating, but.
Commemorating.
Commemorating together, thank you. And I was very honored to be able to give the remarks on behalf of the board. Also, I want to talk about Community Impact Team, this, still having the Hidden and Plain site at the police department. So, it was tonight, I believe, right, the first, second, and third. So, that's going on right now, and you can register online, go onto the Community Impact website or Facebook page, and you can register, very informative, it's a great, great thing they do. It gives signs of whether someone could be using drugs, or you can spot, you know, if there's any issues. And it's things that you wouldn't even imagine, that you wouldn't even think of, so it's, it's well worth going to. And also, great news, the North Reading Community Impact Team will be sponsoring its seventh annual National Night Out on Tuesday, August second, at the Ipswich River Park. National Night Out is an event focused on strengthening North Reading by encouraging neighborhoods to engage in stronger relationships with each other and with their local law enforcement partners. The goal is to heighten crime and dash prevention awareness, build support and participation in local anti-dash crime programs and common safety issues. It's really a great time, if you have never done it, the police department usually is grilling and doing all the cooking, and there's usually bouncies, and all kinds of things for the kids to do. It's just really a great community thing to do, so.
So, that's August when?
August.
Tuesday, August second, yeah.
What time, what time, I think it says around five-ish.
It's like five or five.
Because they have barbecue.
Yeah, I know, it's like five or five, yeah.
Yeah, so great to see that coming back again. And I would also like to mention Anthony Mafia, what is his actual title?
Our consultants.
Health insurance consultant.
Health insurance consultant, yeah, his father passed away, so I just wanted to make mention of that. They live in town.
Mr. Studo.
So, we had a, the second annual E D C Business Summit, it went well, great participation, great questions. Had a good amount of business owners and interested parties who asked some really good questions. It was good to have Mr. O'Leary there, it was like, you know, walking history book of North Reading, so that's good, you know, we don't have to reference Google, we just had him. And, but we got a lot out of it, and again, the next one that we're going to have, we haven't scheduled it yet, will probably be, once we have a lot of these numbers for SOR, so it's something to keep an eye out, and we'll definitely advertise it heavy, but, you know, it definitely, it's nice to hear from, we don't get as many business community participants here, because a lot of them are home by the time we start our meetings, or about to go home, so it's nice to get that, that view. And then also, not that I want to end my thing on a, like, a bad note, but it is swimming pool season, again. Please be cognizant of kids in the pool. A four-year-old died in Brookline. Near, around, close, again, everyone's going to use their own discretion. I'm not in a position to tell anybody what to do. I can tell you that in my pool, if you're in it and you're not an adult, there's going to be an adult in there or literally with his feet in the water, that just it is. If every adult goes to get a hamburger, everybody out of the pool. It just, there's no exceptions, and again, because with water, I've noticed that it's all fun and games until it's not, and it takes a second. And again, when you read those like that, I mean. I mean, like, it, it affected my day, you know, but again, I, I know that I have a lot of friends in town, we know probably a lot of friends that have swimming pools in town, and again, just understand that even that quick, I just went in to get a bottle of water. And also then, even if you have, again, I have an eight-year-old, and we don't leave him alone, but, you know, you would think by nine, ten, but I also know that you throw a bunch of nine, ten-year-olds in any situation unsupervised, and again, so, I don't want to end on a, like, a dire note, but it, it's just important that if two people hear what I'm saying, and you never know if that can be avoided, but it's just something that I feel like, it's just really easy when you got twenty people at the house to lose focus, really easy. And I just think that, you know, it's definitely on the adults, right? I mean, this one's not on the kids, so, sorry, but it's something that's been eating at me since I read it, and I just wanted to mention it.
When my first was, finished kindergarten, they had a big pool party at Redmond Ave, one of the houses on Redmond Ave. Jennifer Clark, she was my neighbor in Malden, so we had all the families there, she threw this big. She threw this big, big wonderful party for all the kids, all the students, the parents, everybody was there. And I happened to get to talking, I was almost ready to deliver one of my babies. And I, my son was in the pool. And when your kid is drowning, you don't hear screams, you don't hear splashes, you don't hear anything, you hear nothing. And I was talking with another parent, all the parents were around the pool. And all of a sudden Helen Bullis, fully clothed from head to toe, shoes on and everything, jumped in the pool and brings my son up to, and saved him from drowning. And we were all there, I will never forget it, we were all there, all eyes on all these kids playing in the pool. And she thought when she first saw him, he was playing. And then thank God she had her eyes on him because then she realized, oh, he's not playing, he's struggling. And the pool had a slant to it, my son wasn't, he was, he knew how to swim. And he wasn't familiar that as it went down, it slanted deep. I'll never forget it. And I'll never forget her for saving, she saved his life. And I will never forget that. So you're so right to say that because you, they're not splashing and reaching up there, they're going down quietly and calmly going down because they don't realize they could tap the bottom and come up. So it's really something that, you're right, even if they're an experienced swimmer and they have, you have to have your eyes on them. So that's a great message. It's horrible when you read those stories. Anyway, I will never forget that, so. The, and I appreciate Helen Bullis to this day.
I'm sure you do, I'm sure your son does too.
Oh my God, yes, yes. All right, thank you very much for letting us, again, declare this as Pride Month. Pride Ride, again, June 12th, Ipswich River Park, lineup at the park. If you're in the parade, 11:15, ride starts at 12. There's an email on the flyer to F D I C H I A R A at M A C dot com. Like Mr. Wallace said, send your, you know, reservation and I guess, even though I'm sure they're gonna let everything, if you want it, just decorate up your car and go have a good time and if, just show up, show up in support. And the parade ride starts at 12. I had the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but just so people know that they can line up to watch. You don't have to just.
Yeah, you can wait, you know, whatever you want to. The, I, thank you very much for giving the remarks at the Memorial Day. And I also wanted to thank, there was a full, full compliment of all the people that we so depend on to make this happen. The North Reading militia captain Stratton.
Yes, thank you.
Ran it. And Sue Magna for, for sure. Our, all our scouts were there in full force. And they actually get up at the crack of dawn to be with the militia to do the ceremonies at each of our, our, few cemeteries, yes. So thank you to everybody that participated, it was fun. We should put the baseball players at the end because they were throwing everybody candy. And so they were sort of infiltrating every, every segment along the parade.
We were in a rough spot.
Throwing a lot of candy, it was, it was really, but everybody was so excited to be in a parade and see a parade and have a parade. So that was a great day, it was a nice way to commemorate the day and nice, nice work by the band to add it so much to it. The, I also had the pleasure of joining a social stu-, senior social studies class, Mr. Austin's social studies class. And they had a specific question about what the process was to getting electronic signs because they wanted to, to, they were, they were brainstorming about how we could encourage voters. And they thought that electronic signs in the community, letting the, alerting the community of the election and where to vote, go to vote at times would be a great idea. So I completely forgot that we had this fire department, the emergency signs, which when I called Chief Murphy, he said, well, you know, we are, we already approved that in the capital, capital plan and that's going to town meeting. I said, oh, thank goodness, I have a direct answer to the question. Because he said that for public, for public signs, that, you know, for public, I guess, public service announcements, that, that in the proposal, that was another use of that. So, so I'm happy to tell, not that they're listening, but that's one of our warrant articles, Article 17. So I did tell them that at the, but it was fun. It was fun to address them and they want to try to do this kind of, he wants to try to work it in annually where, you know, one of the members goes and just kind of does, you know, process procedures, you know, type of things like that, which I think is great because we, we talk about this voter engagement and voter involvement all the time and are, not just at our meetings, but at strategic planning, so. That said, town meeting, again, this year, it's gonna be at the, it's gonna be indoors, right? It's gonna be, it's gonna be indoors, at the gym, at the North Reading High School, the gymnasium. It happens to be the same night the seniors are exchanging, are getting their yearbook, so I told them to take a peek in. So you want to see what the process is, come and join us and, you know, you need your tag, but.
So we're not doing it in the auditorium thing?
No.
We're not doing it on the football field.
No, but the other, remember the first ones I came to before COVID were in the.
Yeah, before, yeah.
Yeah, because the gym's acoustics are, but anyways.
Well, they'll, they'll probably have us set up though way ahead of time. So, because that's what Mrs. King did before, she set us all up, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, but it's probably due to other events that are going on, right?
It's more for the access, that the, the access for, we've received a lot of feedback from the elderly getting into the auditorium and managing the return is a struggle. And so.
You have a big first assignment, the town council thing. You have a first assignment.
I don't have anything.
When it's available, I found that the access is a little bit cleaner and more reliable. The acoustics are not as great, but we do have access to their sound system.
Okay. That's seven o'clock. So come and join us and vote. And then the last thing I had, I think Mrs. McNeil passed out the liaison assignments. There's just a couple to make two, two corrections to it. I meant to shift, everything is as it is correct, but I meant to shift Mrs. Gonzalez to take over the Energy Conservation Committee and Mr. Studo for the Zoning Board of Appeal at the bottom. And the numbers at, at the bottom should be that Mrs. Gonzalez has 11 assignments, Mr. Wallner has 11, Mr., Mrs. Manupelli, me, I have 14, Mr. O'Leary has 11 and Mrs. Studo has 14. I just kind of shifted around primarily Mrs. Gonzalez as a Mr. Studo's and then, you know, added some more of the Human Services groups to Mr. Wallner because he's making some pretty significant inroads on a lot of those as well, so. I don't know if anyone had any questions, if we're all.
So the, the council's gonna retain CPC?
Yeah.
No, I'm gonna retain ZBA.
At the bottom, at the bottom. And then at the top, Energy Conservation is for Mrs. Gonzalez. I, I think I meant, I forgot to switch them over.
What are the numbers again?
Is that a new?
11, 11, 14, 11, 14.
Don't even remember them. Has there always been energy conversation, conservation? Is that new?
No, just probably.
Just popped up?
No, no, some of, some of these seem new, but they're not new, so they just don't.
I don't think I ever seen.
Is there a committee that needs?
That's for you to find, no.
Then you're gonna form one.
I guess you're gonna.
You gotta find a good people.
Oh, here we go.
And if there isn't?
Find one, put together.
Get it rolling, right? All right, so do we have a motion to?
Yep, Madam Chair, I move to adjourn. Second.
Motion to adjourn, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.